Annual training on this act. It's also to help you learn about your legal responsibilities as a board member for open meetings. Just some good reminders every once in a while on this. You'll find out what some of the consequences are if we violate these, these meeting, open meetings laws. It's to help us maintain better public trust and confidence in what we're doing. It is there to help ensure the validity, validity of your actions. If we don't follow these, the statute, then sometimes some of your actions may be considered invalid. And it's to guard against liability to yourself and the school district. You are distracting. Just kidding.
We already, we already stated that John is virtual. We're just trying to make sure he can hear everything and see everything.
There we go. Okay, let's get back over here. This training is going to review just the fundamental requirements of the Open Meetings Act. There are a lot of details that we won't get into, but we will cover the basics. And it's going to cover how the act applies to school district boards, not necessarily cities, towns, counties, other special districts, because there are a few differences. It's, we're going to talk about when the act applies, how to hold an open, a, hold an open meeting, how to hold a closed meeting, and when we can do that, and then any consequences from violating the Open and Public Meetings Act. Okay, so when does it apply? The Open Meetings Act applies to meetings of public bodies about matters within their jurisdiction. So if you all get together just for dinner at a conference or something like that, and you're not discussing matters within our jurisdiction, in other words, you're not discussing policy and that type of thing, that is not, this act doesn't apply to that. You are able to do, to have social gatherings and those types of things. If you all happen to go to church together or something like that, it would not prevent you from doing those types of things. But if you are acting in your position as board members discussing matters within your purview, then this act does apply. There are a couple of things that we need to determine in order to determine when this applies, and that is whether the body is a public body and whether it's a meeting of the public body. A school board is considered a public body. It's a legislative body of a political subdivision. The school district has more than one member. You spend public money and you make decisions about public matters. So you do qualify as a public body. So what is a meeting? A meeting occurs when a quorum of the public body or the district board, the Board of Education, is convened to talk about, hear from the public about, or do something about a matter that is subject to the body's authority. Again, like I was saying earlier. Social visits, those types of things are not considered public or aren't considered meetings, but if you are discussing things that are within your authority, it would be considered a meeting. A quorum is convened when an authorized person, typically a member of, of board leadership, calls members together for the purpose of a meeting and more than half of the body's members are present. So in our case, four out of the seven would be present, and that would constitute a meeting of the board. When is a gathering of a board, of board members not a meeting? It's not a meeting if it's not convened or when it's not to conduct public business. So we've talked about chants, gatherings, and social gatherings. Also, a meeting where no money is spent, only administrative or operational matters are discussed, and no formal action is taken or needed. That is not considered a meeting under the law. Now, I think we typically will try and err on the side of calling it a public meeting. There may be occasions where some of what we do would not be considered a public meeting, but we're, we're typically going to err on the side of yes, let's make this a public meeting and follow all of the notice requirements, minutes, all of that type of thing. So board training, some sessions with district administrators might fit into that exception. Says if in doubt, consult district legal counsel. We would do that, but like I said, we typically try and err on the side of holding a public meeting. When you are present at chants or social gatherings, we do ask though that you take care not to discuss district business, because the act does specifically prohibit using those situations to circumvent the Open and Public Meetings Act. And we've talked about that, I think, when we've attended USBA meetings and, and that type of thing. We'll talk about items of the training, but not necessarily issues that we need to address with the district. Okay, so requirements for a proper open meeting. First, we have to give notice. We have to meet at the proper place. We're going to talk a little bit more in detail about each of these. We have to act within the scope of the noticed agenda and keep a proper record. Notice, that notice has to be a public notice. There, well, in fact, there are three different types of notice. One is a public notice, the second is a government official notice, and the third is a board member notice. Public notice, there are two types of public notice. One is an annual notice where we establish an annual meeting schedule, and that will be coming up on one of the next couple of agendas to talk about next year's meeting schedule. And we publish that on the website so that the public knows when we're going to hold our regular meetings. We'll talk in a minute about the fact that you, you can hold meetings other than those regularly, regularly scheduled ones, but only in certain circumstances. The second notice is the 24-hour notice. So for each of those meetings that we hold during the regu, or during the year, we also have to provide a 24-hour notice, a public notice. And in that one, we include the what of the meeting. So the annual notice is just a what, or when and where. When are we going to hold the meetings and where will they be held? The 24-hour notice includes the when, the where, and the what. In other words, we publish the agenda of the meeting 24 hours prior to holding the meeting. Then there are other meetings, for example, budget hearings, truth and taxation hearings, et cetera, that require different notice requirements. And so we try to make sure that we, now, we ensure that we meet those requirements as well. Not going to say we're always perfect, but we sure do make every effort. These are some samples. They're kind of hard to see, but you can see the difference there in the public notice on the right. That's your 24-hour notice, and that would include the agenda items. So how do we give this notice? Well, we post it at the office, so we print it and stick it on the, the board downstairs. We post it online on the Utah Public Notice website, as well as on our district website. If it's an electronic meeting, we post it at the anchor location, unless requirements have been met to have no anchor location. We won't spend a lot of time talking about electronic meetings, but the notice requirements are pretty much the same, unless it were an emergency, like a health emergency, and all of you were participating electronically. In other words, we just didn't, because of some reason, we couldn't all meet together, and we couldn't have really an anchor location where the public could come, then, then it requires some difference, different notices. In case of emergency, occasionally there may be unforeseen circumstances that make it necessary for the board to hold an emergency meeting to consider emergency or urgent matters. If the 24-hour notice requirement can be, excuse me, in that case, we can disregard the 24-hour notice requirement if the meeting record reflects the circumstances and reasons justifying the emergency meeting. Has to be an emergency, right? The board gives the best notice practicable. So maybe we only have 12 hours, but we still need to provide as much notice as we possibly can. And the majority of the board authorizes the meetings after an attempt has been made to contact each board member. So in order to hold an emergency meeting, something off from the schedule, right? Each of you needs to be contacted and have an opportunity to say yes or no, I'm willing to have that, that board, or that emergency meeting. And if there's a majority that says yes, the meeting can be authorized. All right, so that's your public notice. Notice to board members. There's two circumstances which require special notice to board members of a board meeting. If the board's going to hold an emergency meeting, just like I mentioned, and if the meeting is an electronic meeting, board members must be given at least 24 hours notice of the electronic meeting. It's typically you all who are asking for that, because you're out of the country or something like that, and therefore you're getting that notice. Notice to government officials. This is one that Monica takes care of. Monica takes care of almost all of this, right? Without her, we'd be in a heap, heap of trouble. Somebody else would do it. That's true, I guess. This one is specific to school boards. School boards must give notice of their meetings to the mayors of district municipalities and the county official if our district includes unincorporated areas, which we do. That notice can be by mail, email, or other agreed method. I believe that we provide that via email to all of those officials. So they all get notice of our meetings via an email from Monica. Okay, once notice is made, we have to meet at the proper location. So we fulfill this requirement by holding the meeting at the location identified on the notice. We always indicate the address of where the meeting's going to be held, and I believe even the room number. And then we hold that meeting where we advertise. If the meeting is a workshop or executive session held on the same day as the regularly, regularly scheduled morgue meeting, the meetings usually must be held in the same location. The only exception to that is if you do like a board visit to a school or something like that. You can have a portion of that meeting held in another location. But you can't make any decisions there. You can't discuss, you know, policy, that type of thing. It's really just a visit to see what's going on. If the board's holding an electronic meeting, unless the requirements for the health and safety exception, that's if we can't all get together for some reason, the board must establish an anchor location. That would typically be the district office, wherever we are videoing or, or what streaming that meeting from. We do have a policy that's required in regards to electronic meetings. You can go and read that in diligent in our policies, the 200 section, I believe. There are some other requirements for boards of education. In general, a board of education must meet within the geographic boundaries of the school district. So we can't hold our meetings in Washington County, because that's not within the geographic boundaries of, of our school district. I think historically, the summer, you know, the July work meeting, some boards have chosen to do that, you know, offsite, meaning not here at the district office. They've gone to a boardroom in, at SUU or Bryanhead or somewhere like that. It was before my time, the board decided to do that here locally. And maybe it was partly COVID and streaming and some of those things. It's difficult to stream and record your meetings in some of those other locations. And so we typically just hold everything here. There are the requirements for meeting outside. Well, the, there is an exception to that. The board can meet outside of the district for a site visit if the visit allows board members to experience something that relates to their responsibilities, which is not available within the district, and no voter action is taken. So let's say that you all were very interested in the new CTE high school in Washington County, and you're considering maybe constructing a similar type facility here in Iron County. We could hold a board meeting at that site in Washington County, because it allows you to experience something that relates to your responsibilities, which isn't available within our district. You're going to, to look at something to see if it's something you want to do here. You may also meet outside of the district if it's necessary to hold a meeting during a disaster or local emergency, which we hope we never have to do. Okay, we have to act within the scope of the noticed. So the agenda I mentioned has to be on that 24-hour public notice, and it must be reasonably specific. I think we are doing a pretty, I think we're doing a really good job there. In fact, we've made several improvements, I think, over the last five or six years to make sure that our agendas are more specific. We're constantly trying to make them better to allow both you and the public to know what it is that we want to discuss or that you're going to discuss in your board meetings. You can only take final action on a topic that is included in the agenda and in the meeting notice. You can discuss items brought up by the public during a meeting, but you can't take a vote on those items. So let's say that someone in the public brings up an issue that's not on the agenda. That kind of adds it to the agenda to where you can discuss it as an information item, but you can't take action until the following meeting. Say that again, or give me an example. Yeah, turn on your mic, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, when we were talking about postponing the vote on, and you know, at that, and brought it up as an agenda item, there was a, a motion and a second on that. Because we had that already as an item on our agenda that we could put that into, we opted to move it into there. We would have actually not been able to vote on it had we just put it as an agenda item on our meeting.
Yeah, we had to wait until that agenda item to actually have a vote, I guess, on that. Yeah, that's not necessarily, I mean, that is kind of what this is talking about, but when I, I thought you were talking about when the public brings up an issue.
Yeah.
That one is different than what you're talking about.
That would have been a motion to amend the agenda. We don't typically formally accept our agenda. So that would have been just moving an agenda item, but not actually having anything to do with the contents of the agenda.
Yeah, you could have moved an agenda item af, with a vote.
Yeah, but we couldn't have brought a new agenda item in.
Correct, you can't bring a new agenda item.
And voted on that during, that, we couldn't have made a motion to have a new agenda item and voted on that during that.
Yeah, but you can move your agenda items around if, again, if agreed to by the board. So there would have to be a motion to modify the agenda or to, to adjust it, reorder it, that type of a thing.
So I have a question on that. So if, I'm just going to use that same example. So if we, so we couldn't bring a new agenda item up that we could vote on that day, so could we have made that agenda item not a new one, but an amended one? That's what I'm wondering, or does that become a new one?
So the motion in that case was to postpone a vote on the agenda item. So it's not really a new agenda item. It was the motion on that particular agenda item. You just can't create an entirely new agenda item.
Right, which makes sense, because obviously we have no time to research it.
Right.
The public has no time to knowledge of it.
And the public doesn't get any notice that we're going to discuss it or anything like that. Postponing is simply, that's how we want to dispose of this particular agenda item.
Agenda item, okay, that helps.
Most, most boards will, will have a vote to accept the agenda as written, and that's when it becomes finalized where no one can change it. But we don't do that. So technically, it's at our discretion as board members at any time to postpone or move an agenda item completely to the next meeting or postpone indefinitely, whatever we would like to do, so.
Yeah, you can do that too. Okay. Records of the meeting have to be made available to the public in a timely manner. Approved minutes are required to be posted to the Utah Public Notice website and be made available here at the office within three days after approval, three business days. Again, Monica makes sure that we comply with that requirement. Pending minutes must be made available within a reasonable time after the meeting. She has to have time to get those minutes together before they can be posted as pending.
Which I was going to ask, do we take that recording? And how do you do that, how do you do the minutes? And I guess Sean is the one who sends out the board briefs.
The board briefs is different, that's not the minutes. That's just a public, it's almost like a summary of the meeting. It's like a newspaper article, in a way.
So Monica, do you just take the transcript? Do you just take the transcript and just highlight things?
She, she takes notes sometimes during the meeting, and then she'll go back and actually listen to the recording of the meeting and take, and adjust those notes and those minutes.
So is it verbatim or is it just a summary?
No, it's just a summary, and we'll talk.
The, the action items are.
Are typically, yeah.
Conversation and discussion is just a, a brief summary of what was discussed and then.
Yeah, I asked that just because AI can now trans, you can just view the transcript, put it in AI, and it will pull out whatever you want. But anyway, I was just curious how you did it.
If I'm talking, it's not.
And that's why often I've gone in to see Monica listening.
Yes, I do, after every meeting.
I know.
Those minutes are required to include the time and location of the meeting, who was present, what was discussed. And that can be interpreted in a lot of different ways. You know, how summarized you get or how detailed you get is really kind of up to the person making those minutes. Some are very, very summarized at some entities. I think Monica does a pretty good job of summarizing the conversation without putting all of the detail in there, because really someone can go and listen to it if they want every word. And you can download it from YouTube and run it through AI and probably have a transcript for it. Also, a listing of others who were recognized and allowed to provide information and a summary of that information provided, and then any other information, which is a record of the meeting that a board member asks to be included. So you could ask for something to be included in the minutes that is part of the meeting. Recordings, we do record all of our meetings. The recording has to be complete and unedited and must include all open portions of the meeting from the beginning to the end. The recording must be identified by the date, time, and place of the meeting.
So when we don't use our microphones, we're probably infringing on that to some degree.
Could possibly be. We do have a backup recording that if, if something were not picked up, you know, we could pull it, the recording from that. We try and use two different sources for that recording, and we take what, the best one, probably?
This one is usually the one I use.
So this one, yeah, it can pick you up whether you're on the microphone or not. The microphones really help the people watching on YouTube, because without that, they can't hear really what's going on. But in regards to the recording of the meeting, we're using this little hand recorder, and that would pick you up if you're not.
So we have the record, but, and I have had complaints from people. We can't hear what you guys are saying, or we can't hear what they're saying, whatever. Right, it's from the live stream, which is what most of the public is, is watching on, so. And I'm as bad at it as, as anyone, so.
Yeah, everybody forgets, right?
I forget my sign.
Now, that's interesting. And it is, it is a different system, obviously. He's going through Google Meet, not watching it on the, on the live stream. And sometimes microphones like the owl actually have a harder time picking up sound that's being transmitted through a speaker than they do sound that's directly spoken into the, to the mic. Maybe, yeah, that might work. Okay. Public comment. You are required to allow a reasonable opportunity for public comment on matters that relate to the board's authority at each open meeting, except for work sessions or emergency meetings. We do that in all of our regular meetings. So if someone were to come and complain about the county or talk about the jail or something like that, President Johnson could potentially say, hey, that's not associated with, you know, our authority. We have no authority over that. Please reserve your comment for the county commission or something like that, right? It's pretty rare if anything like that ever happens. And we typically will listen to whatever most people, or whatever people have to bring to you. In addition, we are required to hold certain public hearings. For example, the budget process or truth in taxation, those types of things. You're going to hear about one today as well in regards to boundary changes. We do have to have public hearings associated with that as well. The board president can and should maintain order in the meeting by regulating the time and manner of public comments as provided for in the public comment policy. And that's part of our board meeting policy. We've, I think, decided on a three-minute time limit. That's somewhat loose. Sometimes they go a little over, and President Johnson's pretty lenient most of the time on that. Members of the public are entitled to make their own recording of an open meeting, and we have had this in the past. People have livestreamed via Facebook Live or something like that, or made their own recordings of the meeting, so long as that does not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. They can't come and put it right here in the middle and, you know, interfere with that. So this is just a summary of everything that we've talked about. Are there any questions so far on that? Okay, I hope I'm doing better than 25 minutes. Requirements for a closed meeting. You have to be in an open meeting in order to have a closed meeting. So you have to start an open meeting, and then that meeting has to be authorized by a vote of the board. We do a really good job of this. We hold the closed meeting for one or more of seven permitted purposes. And then some of those meetings we have to keep certain record of, and others we don't. So we'll talk about those. To authorize a closed meeting, you have to first be in an open meeting, and that closed meeting item has to be in a, an item on the agenda. That's why we put it at the bottom of every agenda, closed meeting if necessary, and we allow you to go into closed session if needed. There has to be a motion made to hold the closed meeting. It requires a vote of at least two-thirds of the board members present. So that would be five out of the seven. In the open portion of the meeting, you have to announce the reason or reasons for holding the closed meeting, the location where the closed meeting is held, and the roll call vote of each board member on the motion. That's why we try and spell that out for you at the bottom of the agenda and highlight the reasons. That's why we're pretty strict on asking you to make a motion with very specific language, announcing all of that particular information. And then that information also has to be included in the minutes of the open meeting, as well as the recording. So we keep the recording going until we've actually entered the closed session, where we may or may have to, to record the actual closed session.
And then turn it back on.
And then we turn it back on when you come back out, right, as part of the open meeting. So there are seven permitted purposes for holding a closed meeting. One, the discussion of character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. You cannot, though, interview anyone, discuss applicants for, or have any discussion about filling a vacancy or temporary absence on, on the board itself. And we learned our lesson on that one and had to have another meeting to do some of that. Second reason you can hold a closed session, closed session is for strategy sessions to discuss collective bargaining, strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, the discussion of real estate acquisition. If public discussion will reveal the value of the property or prevent the board from obtaining the best possible terms, discussion of real estate, of the sale of real estate transactions. As long as we've met other public notice requirements. We haven't ever gone through that one. There may be a time when we, when we do that, and we'll make sure that there are other public notice requirements are met. Discussions regarding the deployment of. Discussions regarding the deployment of security personnel, devices, or systems. No comma between security and personnel. Security personnel, devices, or systems. And certain confidential procurement functions of the school board. That's one that we really haven't used but could potentially run into. In other words, you're evaluating proposals and there is what proprietary information in those proposals about the vendors that should not be discussed in an open meeting. You can actually go into a closed session to evaluate those. And that's basically what I just said right there. The Act does contain one other closed meeting purpose which may, under certain circumstances, apply to a school board and that is to investigate proceedings regarding allegations of criminal misconduct. Typically, you are not an enforcement or an investigating body. Therefore, if we ever thought we might need to use this, we would definitely consult with our legal counsel to make sure that we're doing that correctly. I've never seen that one happen. In regards to records of closed sessions, for closed meetings held to discuss collective bargaining, litigation, real estate purchases or sales, and permitted procurement matters, we do have to record those meetings and we may keep detailed written minutes. I don't think we typically do keep the minutes, but we do record those.
I have all the recordings of every board meeting, digital and also on.
You didn't turn your mic on.
Are, are those available to the public or are they, are they on our website?
Closed sessions are, closed sessions are not available to the public because they're closed.
Right.
But those items, in certain circumstances, could be subpoenaed or grandma occasionally will, will allow for, you know, the release of some of that information depending. It's pretty rare if it's a grandma thing, but, but they're there basically for court records, I think, if necessary. Those recordings have to be complete, unedited, and that's when you'll see me whispering into the recorder occasionally and that's where I'm stating who's all present and when the meeting was held and where and that type of thing. If the meeting's held exclusively for the purposes of the allowed discussions about an individual or security arrangements, we don't have to record or create minutes for those meetings. However, the presiding officer has to sign a sworn statement affirming that the sole purpose for the closed meeting was for those particular purposes and we have, whoever's presiding, sign that. And that's that form. Okay, any questions on closed meetings? Okay, almost there. Consequences, what if we?
I actually do have one question.
Okay.
So when someone gets a grandma request, what can they, remind me, what can they get in closed meetings? Anything they want?
No.
No, nothing?
Very little. I mean, we'd have to look it up. I don't know the exact answer to that.
Cause I just hear people say that sometimes.
I don't think we've ever run into a situation where they could grandma that.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I'm not.
I have seen situations where in litigation, they have been subpoenaed. So I've seen that before.
I'll try and look that up, maybe have, try and get you an answer on that. See if there is a, a situation where that would occur. It's, if anything, it would be after something has happened, like, in other words, maybe the real estate purchase had already, is complete now and someone could grandma the records to listen to the discussion that led to that, that purchase or something like that. What if we inadvertently, cause we would never do it intentionally, right, violate the Open Meetings Act? So if the notice and public monitoring requirements are not met, a court may void the board's final action. If it may, they don't have to, they may. If a court finds an improper closed meeting, the records of that meeting are made public. The board might just be ordered to comply with the law. So they may slap you on the wrist and say, make sure you're complying with this in the future. But typically, these things do lead to inconvenience, embarrassment, and loss of public confidence and we don't like that. So we may also have to pay attorney's fees for someone who successfully challenges the open meeting laws.
And I just state that you notice that we don't always have a closed session. Some, some districts like to have a closed session every time. We, we will only recommend it when absolutely necessary because every time I've ever seen a board get in hot water or make a mess out of something, it's always closed session issues. So, so we just try to make sure that we only do it when we need it and that's all.
All right. What if a board member consciously violates a closed meeting provision of the Act? So you do it intentionally or knowingly. Any board member who knowingly or intentionally either violates or assists or advises a violation of one of the closed meeting provisions is guilty of a Class B misdemeanor. Okay, in conclusion, really the, the overall idea of this is that these meetings or everything that you do should be transparent to the public. They don't mention it specifically in this training, but one thing that I will bring up that I've seen boards really get caught on before is communication among board members via electronic means during a meeting. Don't do it. Just don't do it, right? Anything that you say or deliberate about should be done in the public during the meeting so that the public can hear. And, and again, that's kind of why we get on you about the microphones and some of those types of things and get on ourselves too, cause occasionally we'll forget. But just, it's just so that the public knows what it is that you're doing, how you're deliberating and the facts of the decisions that you're making, so. Thirty minutes? How did I do? Well, where are we at?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Good job. I took a 25-minute presentation, turned it into forty-five. Thanks, Lance.
Any questions from board members? Okay, thank you.
I swear I talked faster than he did and I didn't say more words. I don't know how.
Okay, item number two, miscellaneous information, 2024 RPT Open Ed Audit Report.
Yeah, this one, we put on here, just a little bit of background. There, there are only a few school districts and one charter school that are using a company called Open Ed. They used to be called My Tech High. They changed their name and now they're Open Ed. There was an audit conducted that we were involved in the spring and summer of 2024 and it came out in November of 2024. We're audited all the time and reports come out all the time. You never know which one is gonna be important or gonna have legislation or anything like that. This one had to do with our online program. The students who are participating through Open Ed, used to be called My Tech High and Harmony. So if you go to page nine of the audit report, that's the only page I'm going to cover. The audit of Nebo School District, our school district, and Gateway Academy. Those are the three entities that they audited. They came up with these findings. It is a very, 1.2 there says, "Open Ed and similar education service providers operate under a unique funding structure." And, and that is correct. It is a, a unique situation. The normal situation is you're, you're enrolling somebody who lives in your boundary into a physical school, boundary school. And so this is a little bit unique, especially the clientele. Most of the students involved in that program would be considered homeschool except that they really want the services and the materials and the resources that are provided. So they're, they're, they're almost purchasing services through My Tech High. But they're doing it by enrolling in our school district. That way they don't have to pay. So their enrollment into Open Ed is, is just, it's a little bit different. Most of these students are not seeking a degree. They're not seeking a high school diploma. So they're being provided classes through Open Ed. And that's why, the reason the audit exists is because Tuwila School District had 8,000 of these students and from one day to the next, their board decided they weren't gonna do that anymore. And there's, those students needed somewhere to go and, and so we actually absorbed some of them, a small number of them. But they expected to get the same amount of money because of the way this, the funding structure is. So you have, you're funded on your October 1 count of the previous year. So they thought, well, we won't have those 8,000 students and we'll still get the money for one year and we'll have a year to figure out how we're gonna do things. Well, obviously, that's a lot of students and the, the state is not gonna give them that money. So it was a big deal. The legislature was not happy that Tuwila was insisting on receiving money for students that they did not have. And, and rightly so, but it resulted in this audit. So you can see the key findings, but the more important part are the recommendations. So these auditors have gone before the legislative, the education committee twice. Once was back in November of 2024. They gave a presentation and they made these recommendations. Nothing happened. Here's the recommendations. The legislature should consider the four policy options outlined in section 1.2. Maintain the current funding structure, so leave everything as is. Evaluate funding mechanisms for the full-time educational service providers, or in other words, Open Ed. Evaluate that. Have USBE oversee these students and have them take over a statewide contract. Or move the funding from these ESPs to Utah Fitzall Scholarship. Those are the four recommendations that they made to the legislature. No action was taken. It didn't appear that the legislature really had any desire to, to do much with this. Fast forward to May of 2025, at the end of the month in May, I was asked to, to present our point of view on, on this situation. Along with the auditors made another presentation to the Education Interim Committee. And during that meeting, there was at least one legislator who said they were going to open a bill file with the intent to make a major change. Now, if, if, if that legislator is wanting to adopt one of two of the recommendations, that would result in us no longer having those students. That would be, you know, a 3,000-plus student decrease for us. It would be a major, big deal for our district. However, we have foreseen this possibility and I'm still not convinced it's gonna happen. But if it does happen, we have, you've heard us talk a lot about one-time money. We are treating all of that funding as one-time money because if we don't, we're gonna be in the Tuwila situation.
Is that, do we get a WPU or how do we get funded per student in that program?
Yes, we do get a WPU allocation plus trust lands, plus TSSA, yeah, and some other things there.
Now, much of that WPU, as much as 80%, is going to the service provider. That's the contract that we have with them. So it's not like we're just banking all of that. We keep the 20%. Now, we still provide tons of services. We provide all the special ed services. We provide online coaches that reach out to all of these students, keep them going, find out where they're at. So there's a lot of, of registration and counseling and all of those services that we provide. So that 20% provides for all of that. Where, and then there, there is always some leftover. And that's what we use as our carryover, our fund balance. And that's what's, what's made a healthy fund balance for us through the years. So I just wanted to make sure you understand that. There is, I, I have seen one bill file that appears to be addressing this that, that has been opened in the legislature. Who knows if anything will come of that? But I do, I am a little apprehensive because they could make a major change, except recommendation three or four and it really only impacts us and Nebo are the major players. Well, Gateway also has some of those students.
And Garfield.
Oh, Garfield has Harmony. They don't have Open Ed, but they have Harmony. So only a few districts. So it's the kind of thing that they would like to do because it doesn't have a lot of victims out there. There's only a few districts. But we'll see. Go ahead.
Who's opened the bill file?
Hasn't been assigned a sponsor yet. Right now, it's just been opened by the committee, the interim committee. Education Committee.
Have we talked?
The legislator who talked about opening the bill file though was Lizzenby.
Have we talked to our local legislatures about their thoughts on this or?
Isn't Vickers is the coast, is the co-chair, right?
Obviously, we're being, are we, are we one of the, are we the largest district? For, so second largest?
I would say second, yeah, because Nebo's got a lot. Yeah. I don't know how many.
Nebo by far has the most. And then we're probably second followed closely by Gateway. Gateway has, they applied to the charter board to increase their enrollment just so they could take on more of these students. And so I think they're getting fairly significant numbers of, of those students as well.
The concept of one-time funds, is that a mental and fiscal shift over the, since 2024, since we knew this could potentially happen? Or have we always treated those funds as one-time funds?
I would say since I came.
Okay. Just knowing that, I mean, this can get yanked at any time.
Once I learned what was happening in the structure of that, I immediately, there were some red flags, right?
Too dangerous. Okay, perfect.
And it's been a progression. Identifying and attaching revenues to these individual students is difficult due to the, the complexities of the funding structure. But we're getting better at that and, and we've done a really good job, I think, especially over the last few years. Well, it's only been around for a few years, but last couple of years to identify, you know, specific positions and those types of things that are associated with these particular programs. And, and then, you know, identifying those excess funds that are associated with these to, to ensure that they are considered one-time.
Are you guys of the opinion this is a positive for Iron County School District then?
It is, is definitely positive. And, and I think it's really positive for those families that are involved. And, and my presentation to the legislature was all about, the legislature seems to be very supportive of families having options. Some families don't want anything to do with this. Some families are all in. Some families want some kind of hybrid opportunity. Clearly, there are a lot of families who want what this provides along with the services that can come with it and still maintain control over the education of their students. This is a great option for a lot of people.
Is it essentially supported homeschool?
It is.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's.
I think the mentality of of most of them, I wouldn't say all, but most of them is they're homeschool. But they're enrolled in this program so that they can have access to the materials, resources that they need.
Is the WPU greater through this program than it is for us? It's it's all the same.
It's the same.
Okay.
But we only get twenty percent of it.
Well, right.
So if they were actually enrolled in school, you'd get a lot more. How many students locally to Iron County are in that eight thousand?
I think that's somewhere between six and eight hundred, if I remember right.
And those students kinda can work directly with us. That that would be what they would lose personally if this went to some central other organization. Is those six to eight hundred people would then have nothing to do with Iron County School District.
Correct.
Well, and about two hun- over two hundred of those are not really in the open ed, right? Are you talking, are you including our?
No, that's excluding our online.
Gotcha.
I think it's somewhere between six and eight hundred, if I remember right.
Are these students subjected to end-of-level testing?
They are, except for the vast majority, as you can imagine, opt out.
Yeah, so. I think it's a good, I I agree with Lance in that it's it is good for our district. Um, it's allowed us to uh, have some resources, obviously, available that we wouldn't have otherwise. Uh, but I also agree that it's good for the people that are part of it. Uh, it gives them some structure when it comes to curriculum. Uh, there are a lot of choices uh, in regards to curriculum with open ed and Harmony. It's kind of a best of both worlds type of a thing for those who want it.
Kay, any questions from board members?
Kay, thank you. Thank you for the information. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the information items of our um, school board agenda. And we have school goals, goal presentations.
Ben, we had your cash fund.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
And since I've already taken a lot of time, I'll try and keep this one fairly brief. But I just wanted to make you aware of a survey that um, that I was required to complete recently. In fact, it was due last Friday night. Um, it's a Utah Asset and Investment Review Survey. During last, the last legislative session, there was a lot of um, what, reports and other things that came out about these huge PTIF cash balances that school districts have and that other entities throughout governmental entities throughout the state have. And the result of that was SB three twenty-three, uh, which created the Asset and Investment Review Task Force. And they were asked to conduct a review of reserve levels and investment strategies across the state's public entities. And to do that, they've done a couple of things. They've created a an Asset and Investment Data Explorer Dashboard. And I think as people have looked at that dashboard, uh, there's a lot of information there that is uh, very what, misleading if there is not explanation to the data. And so they put out this survey to try and get some of our input in relation to that dashboard.
Can you change the?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I will, um, and this will come later. Oops, I meant the wrong thing. There we go. Um, but the survey asked a lot of questions about our fund balance as well as our net position. And net position is a government's, what, attempt to report its financial position similar to what a for-profit entity would report, only different. A lot of people think that it's just, oh, this is the for-pro, you know, this is just the business way of showing a government. And it doesn't really do that. Uh, it's very difficult to rely on or to use to make decisions. So we still typically use the fund information, the fund financial statements. So the general fund, the capital projects fund and that type of thing. That's closer to a cash basis method of present of presenting financial information to make our decisions. There are some things that we do look at in regards to net position and the statement of net position. Uh, for example, the age of assets and and that type of thing so that we we make sure that we're replacing things as as required or as necessary. But really, we look at a fun, we take a fun approach. And this task force is really looking at it from the other side. They're trying to to make sense of the data in a way that it just isn't used by, in government. So I completed the survey. A a lot of it was, again, about net position. But really, the keys are in um, our fund balance reserves. And so I created this graph for you. We had to report ten years of information off from our financial statements. And then we had to state whether we felt that our fund balances were reasonable, too high or too low type of a thing. And whether uh, those fund balances helped us to meet uh, our mission and and the requirements of the district, which, you know, obviously, we feel like they do because otherwise we wouldn't be doing what we're what we're doing, right? Uh, but this graph shows you the general fund expenditures for the last ten years compared with the cash in the general fund and the assigned and unassigned fund balance. So what fund balance is, is it's basically the cash that we have left over after we've paid all of our uh, bills or liabilities, right? Um, it's like equity if you're looking at uh, a for-profit company. It's what you have left over, your assets minus your liabilities. It's what you have left over. But in regards to fund financial statements and the general fund in particular, there aren't a lot of assets other than cash. We do have liabilities. We have end-of-year salaries and wages payable and other payables, liabilities that way. It doesn't include long-term debt. Um, and so really, fund balance is kind of your reserve cash in a way. And it's put into four, excuse me, three different categories. Restricted fund balance, which is amounts of cash or fund balance that are restricted by an outside third party for a particular use. So for example, if we have carryover special education funds or if we have carryover Title One funds, we have to use those funds for special education or Title One. Capital funds and the capital projects fund, we have to use for capital projects. Those are restricted by law or by some other third party. Uh, if we receive donations of cash and the donor puts restrictions on that money, we have to use it for the for the intent of the donor, right? Then you have assigned and un, well, there are four. Committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balance. We talked about committed in the last meeting and you all voted to commit some fund balance towards a project. So committed is money set aside by board action, board resolution for a specific purpose. So it becomes very close to restricted, right? It can only be undone by another, by a board action. Then assigned and unassigned um, are a little more easy to use. Assigned fund balance is fund balance that superintendent and I sit down at the end of the year and we look at the total fund balance that we have that's not in committed or restricted. And we say, we need to be saving up for this and this and this and this. And we'll list several things. One of the things that we have on the list is the opening of a new elementary school. We know that that's something that is coming up. We know it takes some time to get an elementary school up and running and uh, time to what, fill that school with additional enrollment, additional students, right? So that it becomes self-sustaining in a way. So we've set aside some money for the initial cost to open up an elementary school. Other things we might assign funds for is we need to save up for a new curriculum adoption so that that doesn't hit all in one budget year. So we'll, if we know we're going to adopt new um, ELA curriculum every five years, we'll save a little bit of fund balance when it's available each year for five years. So that we don't take the full budget hit in that fifth year when we adopt a new curriculum because there, you know, a million to a million and a half dollars to implement a new curriculum. Uh, so those are some examples of assigned. But we can change those at any point in time as well. It doesn't take board action. It's just us putting our heads together and saying, what do we need to save for? And then unassigned is just what's left over. Can be used for any purpose um, at any time type of a thing. And so what we like to look at is the com, uh, the ratio of assigned and unassigned fund balance uh, in comparison to expenditures. And you can see that that ratio, that's the blue line at the top, has ranged from nineteen percent uh, at its low in tw- fiscal twenty-one to twenty-six percent. And we hit that uh, this year, or at the end of, excuse me, last year, fiscal twenty-four, and then in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. And a good um, rule of thumb is to be in that twenty to twenty-five percent range. Twenty-five percent gives you three months' worth of expenditures, right? Uh, the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization, uh, recommends about a twenty-five percent or s- in that range, uh, depending on the type of government and the fluctuation of your funding and those types of things. What that does for us is it provides us with necessary funds for various things. One is the timing of our cash flows. Uh, oftentimes, uh, we are required to pay for expenditures under a grant before we actually get the money from that grant. Those are reimbursement-type grants. If we don't have cash available to pay those bills, then we're not going to be able to fulfill the purposes of the grant, right? So we have to have some cash reserves reserves to do that. Um, construction projects, renovations, remodels, sometimes we we need to save up for some of those types of things. And that's, for exa, you know, we've we've used that example just recently uh, with the commitment of funds or fund balance for a, an elementary school. Um, food service programs. Uh, I was talking with Gina and she's gonna talk to you in a few minutes that, about the timing of reimbursement for food service. Uh, we found out that they started a new system and it may be two or three months before we get our initial food service reimbursement for free and reduced meals. And so we have to have funds available there to to feed kids between now and when we receive that, those monies. Um, and then it also helps us obtain lower interest rates when it comes to bonding for construction and those types of things. This money is typically held in the PTIF fund. Uh, there are banks and others who are trying to get their hands on the money. Uh, we feel like the PTIF provides a safe and secure location for this money. It meets all of the Utah Money Management Act requirements. And we get a better return than we typically get from banks um, on that savings as well. Public Treasurers Investment Fund, sorry.
Thank you.
It's managed by the state for public entities throughout the state.
What is the percentage return you get on that?
Uh, it depends on the interest rates in the market. It does go up and down. It's hovered over the last year or two in the four to five percent range. Better than anywhere else, you know, any savings account you're gonna get. Uh, we do get banks occasionally that'll come in and say, ah, we can do better than the PTIF. And it's yet to be seen whether they can or can't. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. That's really what I had on that. Just wanted to make you aware of that because there will be probably things come out during the legislative session this spring uh, in relation to this.
When you talk about restricted, does that fall under general fund, assigned and unassigned?
No, that's.
Apart.
Yep. So if you look at the difference between the blue columns and the green column, uh, really, the difference there would be the restricted portion of the cash. Alright, so the blue is cash. That's our cash balance. The green is the assigned and unassigned. So the difference between those two things is really the restricted and committed portion of it. So a lot of our cash, you know, is restricted for specific uses.
So why did we drop in twenty-one?
Um, COVID.
I was wondering if that was the result.
COVID, we had a lot of expenditures. I think our expenditures exceeded our revenues that year a little bit. And then expenditures were increasing. I mean, it, you can see it kinda takes it upward, you know, a steeper curve right there. Um, and so the, to get to a higher percentage, we needed to add to fund balance. And we didn't add to fund balance that year. So that's why it's lower.
And I'm wondering if we got back up to the twenty-five percent because?
Of what Lance just talked about, that all that open ed.
Yeah, all that open ed, okay.
Kay, you need additional questions?
Do you have an idea how much we have bumped annually because of the open ed?
Um.
Roughly?
Roughly, yeah. And I I think I showed some of those numbers. It was the increases in fund balance over the last few years. Uh, in twenty fiscal twenty-four, it was about twelve million. The year before that, I think it was around eight million. Uh, the year before that, I wanna say six and then one or two the year prior to that. And it really is dependent on how many students we have in those particular programs.
So this last year was twelve?
In the end of fiscal twenty-four, uh, we don't yet know what twenty-fives is because we haven't got our final audits.
But it was twelve million.
But it is, it's going to be quite a bit less because we have lost students in that program. So there are quite a few that have joined the Utah Fitzall Scholarship.
Sure.
And so we lost quite a few through that.
A third.
Hmm, not a third, no. I would say like maybe, what was it, five hundred? Around there?
Of three thousand.
Five hundred out of about four.
Well, it was four thousand.
Four thousand.
And now we're, we're, we're probably around three thousand five hundred, three thousand four hundred. I mean, I'd have to look to make sure.
Yeah, no, the the, not holding you to any number, just kind of a ballpark, rough idea. It's sizable.
Yeah, yeah.
Kay, thank you. Thank you for the information. Um, we'll go ahead and move to the next portion of our agenda now. And we will have the school goals presentations, starting with Cedar Middle School Implementation Plan.
You've been so patient. Thank you.
Alright, so our direction was not to read these, as you guys already have them, just talk about how we're meeting them. So we're just gonna go over our uh, total school-wide goals, which is our behavior and instructional goal. So I'll talk about our instructional goal. This is one we're really excited about. We decided to match, well, even prior to knowing this was a district goal, we had chosen as a school on specific praise to be our goal. And now that's a district goal as well that um, will match with the district goal. And so um, we're excited. Our goal was that um, individuals will use praise, specific praise, at least five times per lesson. Our lessons are about forty-five minutes long. And so right now, our school average for praise is thirty-four point seven times per hour as measured through Teach FX. So our teachers have really embraced Teach FX and see the value in it. And they're really um, using that now, not all teachers, because like with anything, we had to give them an option so they would buy in. So some teachers have chosen not to use it because of the AI aspect of it. And they're um, having our instructional coach come in and monitor them. So I don't have their data mixed into this, but um, I'm really impressed and proud of our teachers. They're doing a great job.
Can you explain Teach FX?
Yeah, so Teach FX is a new program that the district has adopted that um, uses AI. So basically, you can have it on your phone or your iPad. And you can instruct it to um, listen to your lesson. And it will measure teacher voice, student voice, group work, silence. It'll measure specific praise. There's about five things, um, other things it'll measure. So the praise, it breaks down to academic-specific praise, behavior-specific praise, and overall praise. And um, it's just a good tool after you're done with um, recording yourself in the classroom. Then only the teacher can access their data. So it's it's very confidential and keeps the students' interaction very confidential. I cannot even see their data. I can see school-wide data, but nothing drills down. Um, and they can use that to improve their teaching and to look at, okay, how am I doing as far as teacher talk versus student talk? Are my students getting enough time to interact? What are my opportunities to respond look like? Those kinds of things. So it's been a great tool. I really wish, um, when I was teaching, that we had something like that.
What percentage of your teachers are using it versus those that have chosen to have instructional?
Right now, we only have twelve teachers out of our over sixty that um, have not recorded a lesson yet.
Okay, so most are using it.
Most of our teachers are using it. And I don't think of those twelve, they're all choosing not to. I think. I think one of the downfalls, if there is one with Teach FX, is you have to remember to push record.
Oh.
So when you get up in front of a class, I have a lot of teachers saying, dang it, I meant to hit record and I didn't hit record. So that's something we've mentioned to them is can the app somehow pre-schedule a start time? So if you put it in and say, start recording at this time, I think we get more interaction from the teachers, and that's something that they're actually taking and looking at pretty seriously. Because the teacher would have to go in and schedule that start time, so it wouldn't just start automatically. But yeah, most of them are using it and are really enjoying it.
So is it audio only or is it camera?
Audio only.
Okay.
Yep.
I get to talk about our behavior goal. Our goal this year is to decrease the number of students that are being suspended because of severe behaviors, and we'd like to decrease that by five percent. So one of the things that I feel like has helped us quite a bit this year so far is our new vape detectors and noise detectors for the restrooms. That's actually helped us on three or four occasions to be able to talk to students that are in there or find out when there's something loud and boisterous going on in the restroom that shouldn't be going on there. So that's been very beneficial. We also make sure that we train our students when they first come to school. We train them on what expected behaviors are, and we do that during our advisory lessons for the first few weeks of school. Another thing that Mrs. Murray is really good at is on Friday, she gives them expected behavior reminders, especially for whenever there's football games or things going on after school. She makes sure that she reminds them of of the behavior that is expected of a CMS warrior. And so we also run our PBIS program, which we use pride cards at our school for students that exhibit in good behavior. We started those the first week of school, we didn't have them out, but they are out now, and so students can bring those when they get the cards, and then they get a little reward for exhibiting good behavior. So anyway, our focus is to have less severe behaviors, fewer of them, I'd like, I should say. So far this year, I feel like we were doing a pretty good job. I don't want to jinx anything.
I have a quick question, on the CTE one, what does CCA mean?
College and Career Awareness.
Oh, okay.
So that's a state program for seventh grade students. So we run ours in quarters. So they have a quarter of wood shop, a quarter of cooking and sewing, a quarter of computers, and a quarter of careers. And then our counselors also teach in those classrooms, and we just really talk about careers, what you can look towards on your twelve-year plan, and how that kind of, does everybody go to college? Not necessarily their career tracks as well, we talk about Southwest Tech and SUU and some of their options there.
How often do your vape detectors go off?
We're still adjusting so we can adjust the level. In the locker rooms, they go off a lot, but it's spray deodorant.
Oh, nice.
So, yay, yeah, it's an Axe spray. Yeah. Otherwise, it's really only, the kids, the news spread fast, even though we didn't announce it. So it's only gone off three times this year, which is, actually by this time last year, we probably had more than four incidences or five of vapes, then suspensions for vapes. And of those incidences, two of them were the same group of kids. So it was a good conversation to have with parents of, hey, your child was in the bathroom both times the vape detectors went off. So that's a concern for us, let's meet, and we were able to meet and set some boundaries with those particular kids and have a really good conversation with their parents. And they haven't had that since, knock on wood again, so.
Repeat offenders? That's a big deal for you guys, yeah?
It is, yeah.
We we really need to drill in on this at the district level, but probably better at the state level. There's got to be some teeth to this. I don't, I'm just mentioning it now, it's not the time for a lengthier conversation, but the repeat offenders are killing us. And we've got to somehow get some teeth with consequences. Anyway, we don't need to talk about it, but this is the resounding theme for.
There's a great article recently that maybe I'll share with the board, maybe in a board update, but it's all about that legislation that changed our ability to refer students from school. So you can smoke anything, you can speed, you can drink, you can do all those things on school property, and you can't be referred to court.
We can refer for marijuana and alcohol, but we'd have to have a breathalyzer for alcohol.
But the court, still.
Yeah, they still won't meet with them, they'll just do a probation officer and that's it.
So so the article is really good because it talks about the impact of that legislation. Kids can do the same things off-campus and they can get in trouble for them. But.
On campus, they're fine.
On campus, it's just up to us.
We need to get some really solid data together to to take to our, to vicars into ship to really pursue something about this, but before we can do that, like you need one more thing to do. But we're not going to be able to push anything until we have some really hard data.
And we have that in educator handbook.
Of course you do, of course you do.
We document every incident we have with vapes and marijuana especially, and alcohol as well, because those are safe school marijuana and alcohol. So we have that data, and I would say.
We just need to consolidate it so that we can put together some type of profile that makes action essential. Of course you have that data, thank you.
Well, all schools have.
How does violence tie into that?
How does what?
Violence as far as what you were saying, Superintendent?
There are some assaults and things that they will they will still charge for, even if it happens on the school property.
Yeah, and to what Stephanie's saying, every time we have a principal come up, they have their own way, you know, frequent flyers or whatever. It's really a small demographic that is causing and taking a massive amount of resource. And I don't want to sound insensitive to those students, but it's damaging to all the other students. So I agree with what Stephanie was saying, that we do need to get the best data we can so that we can show that information, because I think what the legislature did, did handicap us greatly in a way, so.
We have one more question. Okay, so on the social studies history one, eighth grade, you say restructuring the curriculum to be skills-based versus informational-based. Can you just help us understand what you're trying to accomplish there?
So I believe that on that one, let me read through it real quick to make sure I'm thinking the same way they are thinking.
So can can I chime in on that just a little bit? In the standards, there are often the the thing that you're learning, we're going to learn about the Gettysburg Address. But then there's the skills that they develop, as in finding resources, finding primary resources as opposed to secondary resources, those are the skills. And so I think what the teachers are saying is we want to make sure they have the skills down, not just memorizing facts about history.
And that's what I'm excited about, that's why I asked the question.
Because especially our students now, they have a lot of places they can go to get facts, right? So they still teach those facts, especially the essentials, Constitution, founding government, those things are huge in eighth grade. But they're teaching them the skills of, when you are looking those other places, how do you know if this is truth-based? Or if this is just social media hearsay? What shows you that, and going primary source, secondary source, those kinds of things? So they're doing a great job, our history does a really good job with that.
And I just had one question, I know with our community council, we had had a problem with language barriers. We were going to fund a bunch of iPads, have you noticed, has that helped having those or?
We haven't purchased those yet, we will be purchasing those. So what we have funded are, right now, not out of trust lands, but out of another fund, is some translating devices for secretaries and office, and that's been helpful. And then we wanted to see if those are working first, because they do have the earbuds now that will translate on.
On demand, right.
Direct time. And so that's what we wanted to try over the iPads when we talked to the teachers. So we're trying to see if those are working, we're testing them out in a couple of classrooms, and then if they're working, that's what we'll.
Then you're going to get more to help with the translation issues.
Yeah.
Kay, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Cedar Middle School? Kay, alright, we will now go ahead and have Canyon View High School Implementation Plan come. Just you, Denny?
Yep, that's me. Alright, so the the part I won't cover, every department has its own individual academic goal. I would just say we've had some pretty good results in our academic areas, teachers are excited and they've set goals that reflect that. For our behavior goal, we've been, the last couple of years, focusing on providing positive feedback, and we found that to be very valuable. We've used good news postcards, we bring those to every, we'll print out a label for every student in the school and label those, and then have the postcards, and ask teachers to look at those who don't have yet not received a postcard, and see which teachers or staff members are able to send something positive home about that student. And then we keep those lists, and it's, we can tell who has and hasn't received one. And then in addition to that, we also set the goal of having eighty percent of the students receive some kind of positive behavioral or academic feedback. They mentioned, Cedar Middle mentioned Teach FX, we've got that all around the district. Our goal is to use it no less than two times every teacher during this quarter, with the idea that we, it's hard, it was difficult, we talked about how to set a goal, it's pretty difficult, we don't have much data from Teach FX yet. So we are committing to use it, and many teachers are using it much more than this, but at least two times for at least twenty minutes, so that on our professional development day in October, we can set a more specific goal regarding Teach FX. And then the district goals came out after we'd set our goals, and there's a pretty strong focus on on very specific behavior and and academic praise, I would guess will end up in that range. So those are our school-wide goals, and then I'm not going to read to you all of the individual academic goals, other than to say, I think they're awesome. I'm pretty proud of the process we go through and the thoughtfulness that goes into those.
Can you tell us a little bit about the podcast on the counseling?
So our counseling crew has created a podcast called Nurturing the Nest, I've tried to send that out, hopefully people have been listening. The idea is, one of the hard things to do, especially when you get to high school, is you don't get the same volunteer and parents in the school to to work with the kids type involvement, and yet there is so much information that needs to be shared. And we've struggled to do that in 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 super effective ways. We do have senior meetings, we have sophomore meetings with every student and parent, except those that we can't track down. And so our counseling department has put together an effort, we'll see how it goes, we've had a couple of episodes, we had an initial one. And then we also had one right this last week during homecoming. Keaton Kringle was an alumni, an alumnus that came back.
It popped up on my feed, it was really cool.
Yeah, it is super cool, it's fun. There are AI tools now that make it so much easier, you used to have to spend a lot of time editing, and it's a snap now, really cool. I'm hoping that it gets the legs, I think it will get, and that is one of our goals that we set, well, I think it is, I haven't.
It's this week's, this week's feature on the Iron Five video will be the podcast, so we're recording tomorrow, so we're excited to highlight.
Pretty cool, it's fun, I was on it too. They can edit out any bloopers or verbal slips you might have prior to publication. So, I don't know, any questions for me regarding Canyon View's goals and?
One thing for me that I've been more and more spending time thinking about is the fact that the state and the district were struggling with math. Is there anything specific that you feel that we need to do with our math programs that would help us in that area specifically?
It's hard for me to speak to what's going on in other schools because I don't really get to see it for us. So so good practices produce good results. If we are targeted on what we want, if we are able to have data on where students are, and then make a plan to help the, help them where they are, not just just teach the math curriculum, that seems to have the best result. It's not easy, we're looking at tools, I've got, in our Falcon Academy, I've got them looking, they've been using Alex. There are lots of good tools, I don't care what tool they use, I just want them to be able to to know where their students are at any given time. A tool's important because you can be a superhuman teacher, you do not have the time and the bandwidth to design an individual curriculum for a hundred and twenty kids. And so that's where those other tools are really nice, with AI especially, it's a snap of fingers, and you can take a test and it can spit out a lot of stuff. Now, it needs the teacher's touch to understand how to tweak that, make sure it's appropriate, but anyway. So for me to answer your question, for us, it's thoughtful approach to what we're doing, ability to measure it, and tools to help us produce the materials and grade those materials in a timely way so that the teachers actually can do it.
And AI is helping with that, I'm sure, because like you say, you identify your problem, and then you can produce curriculum.
Yeah, you can give a kid an exam, it'll give me a grade level, I can spit out extension work or remediation work, and the teacher doesn't have to spend three hours designing it.
And this is a new phenomenon for us because the state of Utah really made it difficult. Years and years ago, they decided to go with what's called the integrated model, one of only two, I think, two states in the whole nation who did so. And what that did is it no longer separated geometry and algebra and and all those content areas, it lumped them all together. Now, guess how many publishers are creating materials and resources to help with that? The answer is none because there's no market. So we did ourselves a disservice, and with the advent of AI, we're finally getting some resources now that that we just didn't have. Teachers were doing everything from scratch, and that's a real problem. And I've been advocating for the state to to look at that, to to try and see, you know, for that main reason, maybe we ought to, I mean, it's good to stand apart sometimes, but sometimes it's good to go with what, you know, the traditional way that that others are doing because of the amount of resources that are available. So there are some challenges that we're not in control of.
Didn't we inherit that integrated curriculum from Common Core?
I I believe it happens in in kind of the same timeframe, I don't remember if it was exactly connected to that.
Common Core completely revamped that math curriculum, and we decided.
I'm not sure that it was though, because many states adopted the Common Core.
They were contemporaneous, not derived from.
Do we have funding that's attached to the requirement to use that from the state, or are we bound to use it?
That's just the standards.
Just the standards.
That's that's the courses that they have.
They're going to test on.
They said it's Secondary One, Secondary Two, Secondary Three. There is no longer a algebra, a geometry.
I think it's obvious that it was something that happened that caused the problem, and, you know, I feel bad that our schools are struggling with that, that's why I asked the question. But it is something that I wish there was, and thankfully AI is helping, but it is something that I personally would love to see us to be able to really address, so anyway.
I was able to speak with Emily Green, who's on the state board last week, and we had a great conversation about that. She's a champion for this issue, and hopefully, you know, we're we're hoping that we can help her to to persuade. There's a lot of staff at the USBE that 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 likes the integrated model, and so it's a tough hill to climb.
Yeah, so I was also concerned about the math, that our goal is to have the average student hit thirty-five percent.
So that's not good unless you understand where we've been and where the state and the district are. Then you realize that's, if, when we hit that, we will be, we'll be leading the district. And I can't remember, I don't remember the numbers, I think we hit that this year in a couple of our classes. So and what that is, is the kids that met the criteria on the end of level tests. So, not good, but.
And it is, I know that 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 looks alarming, but if you look at the rest of the state, we showed you the data in the in the summer. Remember the green, what, the green meant that we were above the state, and the arrow meant whether that group of students was better or worse. And we were green all over the place because we're above the state, but there's some weird things. I just, I don't like the way the state assesses. If you were to sit down with some of those, most of those students that aren't included in the thirty-five percent, and have them do some work for you, they'd be able to do it. But it's the way it's assessed and the complexity that the state's getting to now, where they want to assess several things in one question. There's no straightforward questions anymore. It's getting more difficult, that's another reason why we feel like it's important for us to have an assessment that we control so that we actually know, can they do it or can they not do it? That's a statewide issue.
Kay, any additional questions from the board? Kay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kay, now.
Okay, now we will have the preschool improvement plan.
Hello. The two that I wanted to highlight really quickly is our behavior and our instruction. We're really excited about the instruction. We are also using, using Teach FX and this is before we even knew we were going to use it. We wanted to improve language development with our preschoolers. We're noticing that they're coming in with less language, needing more support. Whether they are qualifying to receive special education, education services or not, even our typical kids that are tuition or grant-based are lacking in language skills. So we wanted to focus in on that. So we're going to use Teach FX to help improve our staff with questioning, asking open-ended questions. It's really easy to ask a preschooler yes or no questions because usually they can say no. It's their favorite word. Yes comes later, but to help the kids elaborate on their language in answering questions, that's our goal. We're currently in the process of gathering a baseline for that and in October, we are going to have all of our staff and all of our staff will be using it. I'm encouraging them all to use it and we have about fifty staff members. So hopefully we'll have a good baseline and then improve from there. And this will be during, in more informal times, so not just instruction where the teacher's there, leading the group, the large group. This will be during playtime outside. This will be during guided instruct, play inside and transition time, just encouraging language development. So we're really excited about that one. And then we do have behavior. We're also excited about it, just not as much as instruction, but it is, we, we've been studying the last few years, the Utah Pyramid Model for Behavior. It's a type of PBIS and it's for early childhood individuals. And we are taking one of the components. We, last year we learned about the big five and we're taking number five, which is peer-related skills. And we're going to focus in and do about two lessons a month of peer-related skills. That can be from making friends, that could be from them asking questions and engaging that way. It can be sharing, turn-taking, things like that. So, and then the teachers are going to, how they're going to do that is they're going to gather, write it in their lesson plans and then they're gathering that data to, by notes or observations of how the kids are using it, writing it down and having discussions with the kids about it. So not just in a one-time thing, but throughout the whole session that they're there. So we're really excited about that one too. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
I love preschool, by the way. It's one of my favorites.
I do too.
I was wondering, maybe you didn't put this down a goal because you're doing really well at it. Do you do any like creative goals or anything around creativity for the young children?
So like art stuff?
Yeah, arts and like creative thinking and movement, dance.
The grant that we have has us write those in our lesson plans and we do have those going on. I didn't create a goal on that. That would be a good idea for one year to, to do a goal that way. We mostly chose more academic goals because the PE testing that we take is a state test and so we try to improve in those academic areas as well. However, we do, we do do art. We have that and we did an emphasis in art last year. We had Kirsten, who's the instructional coach with the district come in and do lessons with us and then we implemented them in the classroom.
Yeah, and I'm thinking all of the creative art, you know, dance.
Correct, yes.
Singing and all the things.
Right, yeah. We do a lot of that in our drama area. I bet we could do a little bit more with the dance and movement, but we do, do drama with the kids because that's a great way for them to learn their social skills. So, yeah.
I love that you're focusing on social skills and I know at the preschool level that's pretty normal, but I listened to a podcast just a couple of months ago about how even as adults, we don't know how to make friends now. We just, that's a lost art and it's so necessary because we need human interaction. So the more we can do that, I, I, it sounds like it's not an important thing to learn in school, but learning how to make friends and building relationships is something that really right now for twenty to fifty, sixty-year-olds, we struggle with to figure out how to do that. So I love that you're putting an emphasis on that.
I went into the classroom today and I wasn't even going in to observe this, but I'm so glad we did choose this as a, as a, a goal because I went into one classroom and I'm looking and I can see all of the kids in different centers and they're all by themselves. And I'm like, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna not fix it, but help enhance the, that social aspect, so, yeah.
And I just wanted to clarify, you said that just in general, kids are not speaking at the level that they used to be. Could I understand that? And that's across the board?
That's across the board. That not just, we are, we have more kids, how should I say? They are eligible now to receive speech therapy because their language development is so low, but they're not the only ones. We have some that are low, but they're not low enough to be eligible for special education. So, yeah, across the board there. It can be screen time. That's a, that's a theory. It can also be, you know, these are the, we are just over the hump of the mass kids, you know, so they're still kind of in that area. They were born in twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, so, yeah. And sometimes parents just don't know that they're supposed to talk to their kids as much anymore. Yeah, so.
I actually think that's very true and maybe this is too much information about myself, but I ran into that with my middle, who actually went to one of these preschools and he's doing great and he's a senior now, but, and it wasn't, he just decided he didn't want to talk to us. But as a mom who had a business degree and not an education degree, that was not something inherent in me that I needed to know. And so when I sat down with somebody and they asked me these questions, I'm like, I don't know that we focus on that. And, and you just, you don't. If that's just not what you studied or what you grew up with, it's not inherent to parents, not all of them. And so I was very grateful for it.
All right. Yep. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now go ahead and hear from Enek. Oh, sorry, I skipped. I'm trying to push us ahead. From South.
As you notice from our wardrobe, we just came from the color room. So we decided to participate and to be all in and so that is why we look the way we are. So just to be aware. So, but South is one of the best schools. I just, I don't want to say in front of them. But anyway, we love South and we are so excited about it. This year we're focusing on leveling up in all aspects, social, you know, academics and all areas and help, really helping those kids that way. We are still part of the Elevate Grant. So you'll notice that we kept same categories as before just because we're supposed to build up over those three-year time period. So with it, for our behavior, we are still doing attendance because we know that was one of our low areas before. And our goal last year was to be able to hit ten percent so that we were going to keep everybody, so we did not go below ten percent missed days. And we got that goal. But now we're leveling up to the next level and we are shooting for ten days total because we know that if they missed ten days, that's still one day per month, right? And if they take it all in one month, that is a lot of time that they are not there learning what they need to do. So currently, this is going back from last year, even when we had the other goal, we had forty-four percent of students missing more than ten days of school. Our goal is to stop that and to be able to decrease it by five percent. And we are still going forward strong with, we started out with our parent meeting at the very beginning of the year, talking about how, how important it is to be there, how we need them there, how we grow and thrive in all ways. From that, our teachers are sending home monthly newsletters that just say, how many days the students are missing already? We're reaching out, we're doing whatever we can and we're trying to make school more engaging and active in a place where everyone wants to be, to be able to help that so they can be there and to learn the things they need to know. Questions about that? Okay.
I am here to share with you about our instructional goal. We would like to have our teachers improve their baseline score with Teach FX in pressing students to explain their thinking by five percent. Last year, we spent a lot of time, well, the last two years in fact, we've spent a lot of time on improving math discourse and discourse across the subject areas where we get the students to engage with one another as opposed to just answering the teacher's questions. And so we'll be using Teach FX as well, not in an evaluative way, but rather to press the students to explain their thinking more often and to, also we're going to use superintendent's desire to focus on creating positive classroom environments by incorporating the five to one with a positive to negative ratio. Teach FX will give us feedback on how much our students are talking and whether we are asking questions that invite deeper reasoning. It also helps us to reflect on our ratio of those positives to correctives. And so together, we are hoping that these shifts will help us build some classrooms where students feel supported, valued and encouraged to share their ideas.
We want them to show why they think that, just like the answer, but no, tell me why you're thinking that.
Explain the reasoning.
Yeah, explaining it, getting into more of it. And they're all setting goals for themselves so that they become better at these areas and we'll celebrate it. Any questions for us? And I should say that the teachers knew our school goals that we had set before and then they took and branched off in their specific subject areas and decided, how can we better, like what area in our area would help support those goals as well? So as you look through, like kindergarten has these goals built on those specific foundational skills and getting it to where they can be, then to support the first graders and second. So it was kind of a team effort and we really actually loved how we did this year with the whole team meeting together. So it was great.
Any questions for board members? Okay, thank you so much. Yes. Yes. Principal Heaton said that it does redact our words, so he's not overly concerned about it.
And can I just speak? Yeah, we don't, and it's more, we've let our teachers have some choice in how frequent, we just want a certain times and they're setting their goals individually. So we've allowed some flexibility with the teachers. They don't have to use it all the time, although I have to tell you, some have gotten addicted to it and I'm not going to lie about this. They're like excited because they set, in our school, we have them set their own individual goals and so they're finding those goals within there and it's a way for them to be able to see how they're doing with their goals with our support. So a lot of times they're the ones who want to use it.
So they have the autonomy in making those decisions and utilizing it as a tool and a resource.
Right, so we just see how many times they've been using it kind of and we're there to support them, like do you need help with it? And then we're getting our baselines and stuff like that and tracking the progress there, but they do have a little more autonomy and they're not mic'd up all the time unless they want to be.
It's impossible.
Hey, can you come up to the mic? John can't hear you. So John, what she's talking about is you can't actually access that data. She's going to speak into the mic about it.
So it, we talked about that a lot with Teach FX because that was one of our teachers' concerns. So it can't be grammar requested. It, you can't access that in that way. The teacher can see that transcript. They're the only ones that can see that transcript. I as administrator cannot see that unless the teacher chooses to print it out and share it with me. And I'll just be really honest, at a middle school level, who's not mic'd up all day? Our teachers know, they are getting recorded all the time by students. And I know if a parent's in my office, eighty percent of the time or higher, they're, I'm being recorded. And so we've been openly, we've openly discussed that in our faculty that you just have to know that you're on all the time. And this is a safer way to be on.
I will be giving a presentation to the board next week about Teach FX and I hope that we can answer all of your questions and, and I can show you some of the information. I don't think it, it is, what, I think there's some misunderstandings of what it is and, and what it can and can't do. So I would like to do that next week if that's all right with the board.
And I think to John's point, where we've got so many educators in here, is there something we can do as board members that helps offer a level of protection that makes sure that it's a tool that you can use and not anything that becomes problematic? If we need to do something by policy, then let us do it. You know, get us the information. If it's built into the system that the protections are there, then great. That's good to understand, but you guys are the ones who know that and know it inside and outside. So if we can put something together that offers that level of protection for you, let us do that. And I think, you know, that's what John's pushing for.
And we appreciate that.
And that's why I need to, I need to share the information. I apologize to the board that you're hearing about Teach FX. I, for some, for some reason, I, I thought that we had gone over Teach FX with the board in, in some detail, but. So I'll, I'll bring all of the information, including all of the FERPA and everything related to it next week and, and then I think that would help the board to know whether you need to take some action or not.
I just wanted to say to you guys, I do like the five to one ratio thing because I can tell, my, my children attend South and I can tell you, there's a big difference with attendance with how much they want to go based on the environment they're experiencing in the class. And year over year, that's been a big challenge. Sometimes, and I don't know if it's just the chemistry with the teacher or whatever, your student may not want to go, they're not as ambitious to go, but I think that's really wonderful that we're trying to focus in on a way to give them that positive encouragement. And I think that will help with your goals of attendance in ensuring that we, that we do that. But anyway, and I am, I think John raised some valid concerns. I, I didn't, I didn't think that it could record and I guess Lance will clarify what the students say I think would be my biggest concern, but anyway, we'll discuss that more next week.
Okay, Enek, now your turn.
Thank you for this opportunity that we had to come and do our goals and our areas of focus and stuff for the year for our improvement plan. I'll be going over the areas of focus and Melinda here will be going over the, the goal part of it. Our first one is our behavior. The way that we looked at this as a faculty and staff, we didn't just include our faculty, but we also included our staff, our PE aides, our recess aides, everyone in the school for this goal is, and task is that, we looked at last year, we had our setup, so we, our assemblies were, were a little bit rambunctious and stuff like that and that was the one our teachers wanted to focus on. But then that went really well, so we said, let's extend that to our recess, recess and playgrounds and our specialties like PE, computers, any of those other things. So that's where our area focus shifted for our behavior and Melinda will go over the goals part of that.
So essentially, our focus with playground behavior this year, we know as educators that decreasing behavior situations and incidents on the playground will decrease the time spent for teachers having to referee, solve problems, contact parents. So it lends to having more time for instructional direction and, and learning for the students. So our goal this year is by the end of the school year, we will have implemented consistent rules and expectations for playground behavior for all kids, including explicit instruction in conflict resolution strategies. We're, we're seeking. We're, we're seeking a twenty percent reduction in playground-related behavior incidents and an increase of at least fifteen percent positive student responses on some surveys, great appropriate surveys that we've created, to, to see if kids are understanding, we can't just assume that kids always know how to effectively navigate playground situations, and in the world of school safety and security, a sense of belonging is the number one deterrent for school violence, and so we're kind of, we're really digging deep to see if our students feel like they belong, and if they know how to solve situations out on the playground, and we'll monitor this with the incidents reported, as well as our surveys that we are doing to kind of gauge their thinking.
And the next one is our school-wide instructional. We had our teachers get together and decided that we wanted to less teacher talk in the classroom, that was our biggest goal, is we wanted teachers stand up, they talk, talk, talk a lot, and they're not getting, like we've talked earlier, students aren't giving their, they're not, they're just not talking as much, and that's a big thing we see with our teachers and our, that they're like, they're always coming back and saying, we need our kids to talk more, we need our kids to, what can we do, what can we do? Well, when we were in our meetings and stuff, we, we came with the teacher talk, like everybody, our TeachFX, and so that was a tool that we were going to implement into our goal, and it'll help solve that teacher talk, because it lets the teacher recognize what, how much they're saying compared to the amount is going to the teacher, the students talking, and, and also the questions, the value of the questions and the deep dive, so Melinda will go with the goal without them.
So just a little advertisement for TeachFX, coming from an instructional coaching background, TeachFX is such a safe space for a teacher to perfect their instructional, their instructional practice, and I don't think many of us realize how many times we say um, or huh, or, you know, these, these little idiosyncratic things that we say in our everyday speech, and, and TeachFX picks up on that, and it helps a teacher perfect their own practice in a really safe space. You're going to be really excited when you get to see this next week, but our goal was to play around with, and literally play around with, TeachFX leading up to our October PD Day, and then as the teachers have had some exposure, we've got some fun things in place to encourage them to use it, but as they get some exposure to TeachFX, we're going to fine tune a goal that's very, you know, whether they decide to do it team-wide or just individually, but just fine tune a goal that is very specific to individual teaching practices, and this EBUS, which is an instruction, evidence-based instructional strategy, hits a lot of areas, feedback, classroom discussion, direct instruction, for Hattie's visible learning research, all of these areas contain what we call a big bang for the buck and a high return on our collective investment, so we're excited to see how each teacher will grow and learn and respond with, you know, focusing on their own practice of, of teaching.
We're actually doing kind of some fun things with this, we decided to help the teachers get involved in this a little bit for their own, and every time they use it, they get like a drawing ticket, and so we have prizes for those as they use it for drawings, so it encourages them to use it just for fun, for their own growth, we don't, all I can see is numbers of how much it is, how many times they've used it, they earn badges, we celebrate the badges with a lot of things like that.
They're earning a mug.
They're earning a mug, they earned a mug, even though I already passed it out, but yeah, so, any questions to the board, any things you want to know, what do you want to know? Perfect, we appreciate you guys and all you do, and superintendent for bringing us this, a lot of things to us, so we appreciate that, and Steve, Steve, we really appreciate Steve, yeah, he's our director, so I gotta appreciate him, just kidding, just kidding, no, he's awesome, we love him, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will, we appreciate all of the school goal presentations, we'll go ahead and move to item number two, Cedar Middle School Character Education Program.
Okay, we all have somewhere to go, right?
Yep, that's great, yep.
I don't know if you all know me, I'm Gina Dlang, I'm the new supervisor for the child attrition this year, took Paula's place, so, just a few things, I just got a few statistics, and then we'll talk about maybe negative balances and things, some of the, we've only, I've only had done one month of course at the end of the, end of the month in August, and I just did some statistics showing that we only did about fifty-five more meals this year than last, so that's pretty even. As a district, overall, we are forty-one percent free and reduced, that's over the whole district wide, I mean, of course, you got a lot of the schools that are a lot higher than that, some of our areas and then some lows. We opened the new Parowan High School this year, the filled house, it was a couple weeks late opening, but that's been a lot of fun, our first day, we fed about sixty-five kids, and we're now feeding about consistently about eighty-five to ninety lunches. That's pretty much, winter, we might catch a few more, we go about to a hundred and twenty, I'm hoping we can build that, there is a lot more, I haven't been over to actually see it, but from my managers, them saying that there's a lot more kids sitting in there, they've had to bring more lunch tables out, because they'll go get their lunch, or they'll just go in there and visit whether they're eating or not, or bring home lunches, so that's good, I mean, I'm glad that they can have a place to gather, like the other high schools, and not in what the elementary kids are.
They are loving it.
Yeah, it's gorgeous, if you guys haven't seen it, you have to go over and take a tour, it's beautiful, it's exciting, okay, some of the other things, maybe like negative balances, we're just over about a thousand dollars right now, we usually end up, that's like district wide, but we usually end up around Christmas time, somebody will come in and donate and pay that off, I mean, we, we have a lot of people in the community that pay attention to that, so we're very lucky, we do have a lunch lady account, a lot of people want to know where that money comes from, that is donations, last year, we had two large come in on the exact same day, it was funny, because Paula had left, and the lady had called and asked about making a ten thousand dollar donation, we're like, wow, so she thought I'd take this, I took this donation, the next day she shows up, and I said, here's our ten thousand dollar donation, I thought that was going to Shauna, and why, how did we get that so fast? And I said, we actually had a twenty-five-year-old kid that had his own construction company come in and write this check out, he asked me if he could donate, I'm thinking a couple hundred dollars, he writes this check out for ten thousand dollars, and he just had a smile from ear to ear, he says, you know, I just wanted to do this, and I've made a very good choice of my, you know, my, my life, and I, I do well, and this is what I wanted to donate that to, so, so that's where those come from, those are designed for emergency, you know, use only, but we do not turn kids away, we don't take lunches away, we, that's what they're for, we try to keep it at a ten dollar minimum, we, I mean, we have that in place, saying they can only charge up to ten dollars, but that's when that fund comes in, we will never take it away, they always have a lunch or breakfast. I don't know if any of you guys were aware of the House Bill one hundred that was passed from our state this year, households that qualify for reduced-priced meals receive free lunch this year, that's not breakfast, breakfast is its own program, so that's confused a lot of parents, so the kids that are in that program, eat breakfast, they'll have to pay like thirty cents a day, but the lunches add a free base, that's just for this school year, I don't know if they'll pass it after that, that's, believe it or not, that's where our households struggle the most, they're in between that qualifying for free or being to pay, and that's where most of our, our negative balance come from, so they, House Bill, I mean, there was a lot of the legislature, or people that went and fought for that, and they thought they'd just try that this year and see if it went over, so, so far it's been doing well, so, that's pretty much all I have to cover, do you guys have questions for me that I might not have covered?
Thanks for what you do.
It's challenging.
Seeing Parowans High School, most people wouldn't think that's a big deal, it is awesome.
It is.
It's, you walk in there and see those kids, and, and like you said, it was sixty, and then they keep going.
I think it will, I think it'll, it'll build now they get their friends, saying, hey, we have a place to go gather, and then pretty soon, ew, we smell that lunch, maybe we're going to eat that, so, we're excited, so, thank you.
Okay, now back to Cedar Middle Character Education Program.
All right, so Lance asked me to come, I think there's some data shared on the character education program that the school board has adopted, I'm tired, thank you, it's been a really long day, lots of parent meetings today, so Life Lunch, and I, some question about Cedar Middle School and what we're using, so I kind of wanted to share, so I'm going to start with kind of our history behind character ed at our school, I'm a little biased, but I feel like character education at the middle school is the most vital, these kids struggle, they lose their minds between sixth and eighth grade, I don't know, I've heard it comes back, I'm waiting for my, the rest of those to come back sometimes, but, so to us, it's always been important, way before the district looked at it, way before it was on anybody else's radar, so way, way back in, as I pulled our old community council agendas, way back in twenty twenty-one, as a school, we started looking at, we felt the need, we saw some increase in behaviors and really felt the need, we've got to get something in our school that can teach our kids how to be good citizens, and how to just be respectful, and like Megan talked about, how do we make friends, how do we treat each other, and so we started looking around, we are fortunate enough to be a schools to watch, that's a national recognition that we get similar to an accreditation, so we started looking, we use those schools across the state that are also schools to watch, and it's just a middle school honor, and really talking to them, how do you guys teach good character, how do you teach resilience, how do you teach all these things we want our kids to have, organization, and kids that want to learn, come to school and learn and, and be good social citizens, and so they, we looked at some of the programs that they were all using, and Richfield was using what we call seven mindsets, so we looked at seven mindsets and decided that kind of hit the bill for us, we needed a program that was very easy, number one, for the teachers, they're overworked, they're stressed out, they cannot have one more lesson planned that they have to plan, it has to be something that we can control the content and choose which lessons we show, but the teachers can plug and play and discuss, and, and do it with the kids and not have to have a ton of prep, and so that was something that was really important to us, had to be something that went along with the, our values of our community, and what we felt like was important for the values of student middle school, and so we landed on seven mindsets, we discussed it with community council, and community council approved that adoption at our school, and we rolled it out, and then shortly after that, it got pulled from us after we spent the money and bought the curriculum, because it used Castle standards, so I'm not going to go into that, other than to say, I don't know much about the company that backs that, but the standards are things that we want our kids, I want my kids to demonstrate, it's just being a good human being, a lot of those, and so that was then put on the back burner. In the meantime, we're still feeling like this is so important, and the school board's got to go through this whole adoption process, and our kids are going to suffer while we have nothing, so we just determined that we're going to build our own character education program, because we really still have the need, because we still see these behaviors that are concerning to us, and so our PBIS committee took it upon themselves, and we worked and used our, what we use for PBIS at our school, which is Warriors Defy the Odds, and we took it upon ourselves to focus on those things that we put, that we teach the students in our school-wide expectations, and come up with lessons that are engaging, that have some videos, because middle schoolers need some engagement, and they need something quick and simple, and something that the teachers, we can create as a committee, and the teachers can just play it, we can have it on announcements, and then they can sit and teach it, so we came up with our own lessons that, again, were discussed with our community council throughout the process and approved by community council, Tyrell was sitting on that, community council when we did that, and so what we talk about in our lessons go right along with our Warriors Defy the Odds, so we, in September, talk about being scholarly, and each of these lessons are divided up into four segments, so four weeks worth of lessons, and they're very short, we show them in our advisory, like literally they're less than five minutes, but the first one is we introduce the topic, then we talk about how to use that topic with technology and computers, because that was a huge area we are seeing in middle school, how that topic applies to academics, and then how it applies to behavior and relationships among our peers and, and your behavior as a student, so scholarly is what we talk about at the beginning of the year, being responsible is in October, being trustworthy is in November, having resilience is in January, being compassionate is in February, and being optimistic, we teach in March, and so I can show us a little sample if you want to see it, that's kind of the history, that all kind of happened around COVID, around when we were worried about teachers being burnt out, and so when the school district adopted the program we have now, we looked at it, our counselors looked at it, they were a big part of that, and they, and I hate to say this even, but they did not feel like it was very engaging for middle schoolers, and so there was a huge concern that are the kids going to really take that and learn from it when they're not engaged in lessons, and are they going to relate it where our lessons are already related to something that we teach throughout the year, or something we have integrated and woven into the fibers of our school, so that's kind of where we went, so, now I'm all ready for the firing squad.
Well, the first thing I want to say, Belinda, is, well, I shouldn't call you principal.
No, you can call me Belinda, we all have first names, the kids all know.
Is, you know, you saw a huge need, and you did something about it, and to me, that as a parent of kids, that's huge, so thank you for looking at the needs that you had in your school, and if it's working, hallelujah, I'm all for it, and if you don't want to use Life Lunch, it doesn't bother me at all, use whatever resources work for your school, and your teachers love, your counselors love, your, your parents, you know, if Tyrell was on their community council, well done.
Thanks.
So I was heavily involved in all of this process, and I was also heavily involved in vetting seven mindsets, and I'll tell you that this is, this is a strong point of criticism towards us as board members and towards the district and principals, when I vetted seven mindsets, several of the lessons were benign and fine, but there were other lessons, one in particular, that every person in the room agreed would be completely inappropriate to give to any Iron County student.
Including us.
Including the, including the administration.
And we did not show it, ever.
But I, I think that that's where we often, we come to this kind of impasse as a community where there's a bunch of people that are like pro all the social emotional learning, because they want to help the students, what we're seeing here, and you have parents that are concerned on the other side, because we don't know exactly what the content of the material is, and seven mindsets was a perfect example of something that was, as I say, very benign, most of it, but there was, it was very race, some of the lessons were very about race and all these things, and some of them were just flat out inappropriate, and so I, I do personally carry a great deal of caution with, not because I don't want to help children with their behavior, but because I don't want Iron County School District to be in the business of altering the behavior of my child, that's my job at home, and so I, I do think it's just so crucial that when we approach these programs, that they are vetted at a high level, and that we are ensuring that there isn't that harmful content, because had we, had we adopted seven mindsets, even though the administration of the school and the community council said this lesson's totally inappropriate, it would have been at the discretion of whichever teacher, because that would have been in the manual, that lesson would have been in the manual, and so I just hope you guys realize that I don't think most of the community doesn't want to help students behaviorally, it's just that there are large organizations that create programs, and ninety percent of it's good, and they feed in that ten percent of social altering material to shape our children's opinions and beliefs, and that is what we have to be vigilant in keeping out of our schools, so I just wanted to give that context from being a part of that whole adoption process.
So it sounds like something was politically charged?
A little bit, yep, there were some that were pretty politically charged, and we, as a committee, made sure that those weren't available to the teachers, and they would never teach them, and I, but I think that goes back to us being professionals and knowing... And I, but I think that goes back to us being professionals and knowing our community and what our community standards are, what our school standards are and what we're focusing on. And those lessons would never, even our PBIS committee said, we're not showing that video and we wouldn't show that video. It was just the way it was worded. It was not appropriate for our students. And so those things wouldn't be shown. But I think you'll find that in any curriculum that you adopt, right? Even in our math programs, even in our language arts, there's lessons that the teachers are like, this does not work for my class. I'm throwing it out. I'm pulling something in of my own. And so that's where that professional judgment comes in. And so by doing it the way we did do it, because we saw the need for students to have those engaging videos with possible celebrities, sports stars, especially rodeo stars, to grab all of our kids and be able to pull them all in, famous artists, musicians, so that they all kind of saw themselves somewhat in, in what we are teaching. We felt like we can do that. We can look on YouTube or wherever we need to look and find videos that we feel like represent our, our standards and our values that we've done through, you know, being warriors and pull that in. And so that's kind of what we opted to do. And part of it is my teacher spent a lot of time, a lot of time and heart investing in making that curriculum to help those students. And we, you know, we even talked about last year, if it was always optional, we were told. It was always optional from the superintendent to pull in what we want from the other curriculum. So I did. There's an agenda I pulled up today. It just said, we may have to start using this. And so we need to think about how we want to weave this in and if we can weave it into our lessons. So that's something we're open to doing. But at that time, there was just a lot of morale of, we're being told what to do again and nobody trusts us. And we created this and we know it's good for our kids. And so I then said, okay, the district has said this is optional to use Life Launch. And so we're going to go with ours because it was vetted by the school board. And that was with the superintendent at the time's permission. And so to have that vetted. So we just stuck with that and it seems to be working for our kids. And we like it because we can adjust as needed, which we can do with Life Launch. We can pull out lessons that we need to, but the videos are really engaging. They chose those on purpose and to get kids to really pay attention. And it's very short for that reason because they're middle schoolers. They have a very teeny tiny attention span.
How long did, did it take to develop this? How long?
They spent a whole year.
Okay.
Developing it.
Essentially like modules within the specific traits that you want to, and it's already been vetted.
Yeah, community council looked at it. We talked about it as we were developing it.
Yeah.
And so.
It's great. I mean, I, it, it's, I think it's always best when you can own your own curriculum. Well, that, that's not my opinion. I mean, all the data shows that. And so if you've gone ahead to create, you know, the foundation of the culture you want to develop, boy, kudos. Phenomenal. Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, any other comments or questions from board members?
And I apologize for, again, my other two had to leave. They owe me some sodas or something. I don't know.
Just right over there on the way out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now down to item number four, 2026-27, school calendar.
Well, you have the, the calendar there. No action will be taken this month. We do hope for the sake of the community that we can approve something next month. But we are sending this out to all of the school community councils. We're getting feedback. We've already received a little bit of feedback. So that will be happening throughout this next month. And we'll be able to share with you what we, what we hear. But the calendar is, is a tough thing and you already know that. But I, I want to go over the calendar features that I've attached here. We do have some longstanding community expectations and I learned those real quick when I moved here. Do not start school on a Monday or Tuesday. We tried that. We got beat up pretty bad. Won't do that again. School must be out by Memorial Day. So just those two things start to limit what you can do in the calendar.
Can, is, is, I've asked that and I've had parents say to me, they're like, why do we start school so early? I'm like, because the community wants out before Memorial Day. And every parent I talked to says, says who? They're like, I would much rather go after. And I'm like, I just want to.
I can give them a list of.
It's just, it just, I find it interesting.
As teachers too.
We've, we've said that, but the parents that I talked to are like, no, we'd much rather start later. And so I just am not sure. It's as this way as it used to be. I think it might be a little more even keel than we think. Just throwing that out there. I'm not saying we change it. But the parents I talked to were like, I would love to start later because it's still hot and things are going on.
Until Memorial Day hits and then they're going to school after Memorial Day.
I, I get that, but I'm just.
Maybe you need to do a Facebook poll.
As a, right, as a representative of the parents that I spoke to, I'm just going to say, most of them are like, no.
And if you do change it, please leave Perron out of the mix when you're changing it.
And, and some of that, some of that is just also experience with attendance plummeting dramatically after Memorial Day across the state. It's kind of a universal thing in Utah just because of, of experiences that districts have had. But we're not, we're not saying it has to be that way. So if the board would like to explore that option, we're more than happy.
And I know with Perron, it's a lot to do with the farming. That's a big part of it as it rolls through. That's the expectation.
None of the parents I talked to are farmers.
Are farmers, okay.
So I just want to point that out.
We can get them a couple of chickens so they can feel like farmers if they want, so.
The other thing that, that we hear strongly is the end of the second quarter needs to happen before Christmas. The reason for that is when, when it used to not be that way, parents were frustrated that kids were focusing on their projects and their homework and they weren't really able to have a, a Christmas vacation, a break. Another one is the insistence that spring break be attached to Easter. A lot of families expect that. And we, we also know that there's an expectation that that spring break be a full week. So just with those five things, you, you plug those in, it does kind of limit everything else. If you're going to accomplish those things, and of course, we could consider doing other things. There's other things to consider. If possible, we were asked to consider making the last day of school a Thursday and the Friday becoming that final PD day as opposed to bringing teachers back after Memorial Day. Because apparently teachers have an issue coming back after Memorial Day. Anyway, that's what we're hearing. So that's something that we thought we would try to explore, see if we could figure it out.
I can't believe somebody didn't mention the hunt.
Yeah. Apparently the hunt is so important, it doesn't matter if school is going on or not.
Yeah, I noticed that as well.
I, I have one thing that I would be probably in trouble with some parents if I didn't ask. One thing I've had a lot of complaints about is the fact that our spring break in St. George doesn't overlap and I'm fine with that. But there are, I believe, soccer events that take place and there's a lot of families, and I'm going to bring this up more in future board meetings, but I am very adamant that spring break, families are able to go be families. Is there any way we can get some communication opened with them to see if we can schedule those games so that they don't cut into that spring break so much?
Oh, I'm sure that we could enter that dialogue. I do think that it is complicated because it's not, from your perspective, a lot of, your region is St. George, but in the other districts, their region is all over the place in many different districts. So to align our break with all of those districts that Canyon View would be competing with.
And I wouldn't suggest moving the break. I just think some dialogue between the people scheduling these games. If they can push it to a Monday and then give them Tuesday on off, that's, I think that would be a huge benefit.
I've had parents reach out about the exact same issue. Yeah. Well, and one of our largest employers is SUU and Washington County's break aligns with SUU's break. And I'm thinking, I know we used to try to do that, to try to get them to align, but you're saying that Easter is the more important week?
Well, if we aligned with the spring break of SUU, our spring break would not be in the spring. It would be in the winter.
We did that one year and it was, it was March and it was frigid and nobody liked it.
That's another complaint I hear from parents is they want a warm spring break. And, and our climate is just different than St. You can go a few weeks earlier in St. George, but I, I don't have a problem with the dates. I just think we could do some things.
I work at SU. My wife's a teacher and I don't want them aligned. So. That's nothing really, it's just, it's too cold. It's too cold. Sorry, Amy. That was nothing against you.
Well, if you look at, yeah, if you look at this, get the calendar here, the, the students don't come to school for three days in March from the 10th to the 12th. That one does align with SUU. I don't think it aligns with, does it align with Washington? So there's three days that do align with Washington and SUU.
For this year, which is great. We also align on this calendar year with both fall and spring SUU breaks, which rarely happens. And I just want to state for public record that they just can't always get that and just be glad it's happening this year and it'll probably happen four years from this calendar year. But that's unusual and I don't want to set any expectation that we're going to be able to do that on fall and spring every year.
Thank you. We've tried to do that before, especially with the fall and it just doesn't. But it happens too for this one, so that's good. So thank you, Tyrell. I've made a note here. Well, I think it's worth, worth sitting around a table and saying, what can we do here? So those are the, the things that I think are important. The other things you'll notice are the state allows us up to four days to count in the 180. But this calendar is only using three. So that's a good thing. We're always trying to make that work out a little bit better. The quarters are all even. A days, B days look good. So those kind of things seem to work out in this calendar. But we would love to hear your feedback along with anyone else's in the public, you know, for the next month, especially that feedback from the representatives of, that are serving in the school community council.
I would mention this in terms of A and B days. I have had an, a huge amount of people contact me about how much they hate it. Parents and teachers. I have had.
Same.
A couple of, frankly, a couple dozen teachers who want it changed back immediately. That lesson planning is impossible.
Impossible. I don't, I guess I'm going to have to understand how lesson planning is impossible.
Well, in terms of keeping all the kids in line together, the way that it falls for them, it, they, they, they can't do it. And so they've got large sections of students who are not aligned with others.
Yeah, I had a teacher come forward to me too and say, this is all messed up. Like this is so difficult to manage. And I, I don't remember the particulars. I need to go back and ask her because we were just passing quickly. But she said, and I asked her, send me an email about it. But I know that she was just like, this is so frustrating.
Well, I haven't heard anything, so that's a surprise to me. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have to look into it and see.
I can get some more specific details about it. I, I had, like I said, I've, I've talked with several people who are representative of what I have.
And you said about 24 teachers?
Yeah, dozens, literally at least a couple of dozen who want it changed back right now because they don't know how to manage their classes because it's not, it's not.
Well, what they're used to is that, is that what they do today and what they do tomorrow for the, for the next group are the same. And every once in a while with this calendar, they have a Friday or something that's the same students, two days in a row.
Yeah.
And that's what I've heard from some teachers, that's a wonderful thing to have students two days in a row.
Well, and I think the challenge is that they have some two days in a row and then they have this large group where they don't. And so in terms of keeping their sections aligned, they can't do that. And it's just been very frustrating.
Well, we, we don't, we won't need to rely on you guys to get us that information. We'll go get it from them. We'll make sure that we hear from them what the issues are.
Thank you.
Specifically, when I was talking with these few, I asked for a representation and that, and those were the numbers that I was given, right? And so I, I talked with four who told me truly dozens. Whether or not that's true, I can't tell you. But I can tell you that the, the teachers that I talked with and they're, you know, I, as most are of course, consummate professionals, really attentive to their students and also incredibly, incredibly frustrated. Just, just heads up.
Just so you know, we do have to balance. It's not just a matter of A days and B days and we're just being anal. We have kids who need to participate in Southwest Tech and in SUU programs.
And we have A days and B days, kinda.
There's an extraordinary conflict, I know. And that was in these conversations. That was what I was trying to explain.
Right.
The schedule as we have it accommodates kids at Southwest and the university. This is critical for a number of very important programs. At any rate, just to, just to bring it forward to say that it needs some more discussion. That's all. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions?
I just want to go on record that I think 2026 and 2027 might be the easiest calendar we had for a while and probably will be for a while.
Yes.
Like it just lines up perfectly. And that's typically why things get frustrating when we do the calendar is because it's how the year shifts and where dates align. And 2026 and 2027 is a golden year.
We got the mark.
Golden year. I'm just setting the expectation.
Okay, item number five, intent to initiate boundary change.
So this is quite a process. I have linked in this document the statute. We, we have a lot of little requirements involved. And you wouldn't think that, that it would be that stringent, but we do need to put something on the agenda for next week. I'm hoping that the board will consider a boundary change. And this, this action would just initiate the boundary change process. It wouldn't be announcing anything. And then, so that would happen next week. And then as we go through, you can see all of the different steps that need to be completed. There are timeframes. In order to meet all the timeframes, I, I'm proposing that we schedule our public hearing in February in order to have enough time to be able to meet all the requirements. That seems to be, that, that would be early enough to make a decision that we could communicate with all of the families and, and do all of the things that we need to do. We have 60 days after that decision is made final to accomplish all of the things listed there underneath after approval. So these are just all the requirements. I just wanted to make sure the board knew that since we're going to start talking about it, we will provide with, to you, a draft idea of what the boundaries could be in our October work meeting. But it would just be an information item for October.
And which, which schools?
It would involve all schools.
All schools. Reviewing them all. Okay.
Well, the, the issue that we have, we would not do this if we didn't have to because this is not an easy process. But with East coming online and the increased capacity there, we have an opportunity to take some pressure off of some of the other schools. And the only way we can do that is through a massive change of boundaries. We also will have the addition completed. We also, uh, will have the addition completed shortly after school starts to Canyon High School. And it, we believe it's time for us to consider that high school boundary as well.
Will you be considering the new, hypothetically, the new South boundary with that, or would that be a fir-, a future discussion?
I think that would have to be a future discussion.
Because just not formally in the works yet.
Tyrell, what did you ask? Can I clarify that?
I just asked if that would include a potential South Elementary as well, but because we're not far along in that process and we don't know exactly where we're going with that. We'll be doing it again, right, yeah.
Okay, so that, that was an excellent question. Um, my next question would be, I have so many logistics things going through my brain. First of all, I'm like, it's February soon enough, um, but the second, these would be effective 2026, fall of 2026. So in my mind, I'm like, I have a kid, they got registered in December and then now all of a sudden they might be in a different school and what does that look like?
Registered in December for the following year?
For the following fall, right?
Well, all those registrations normally happen in the spring, but.
Right, well, okay, sorry, they start talking about it in December and then they get registered in the spring, right, between January and March.
I, I'm sure we would have some accommodation in place.
No, I, I, I agree, but that's just something that.
Logistically.
What would happen, right?
Right, oh, for sure.
So you're saying if we could move it up, that would be nice, but as I plotted out.
I'm just asking all logistics questions.
Well, as I plotted out, you can see there's a 30 day requirement for this one and a 30 day requirement for this one. And, uh, and then you have Christmas in the middle of all that, uh, so it's just, the timing is difficult. If we really pushed and maybe even, we might even have to change dates of our board meetings. Uh, we could potentially get it in January, but there's no way we could do it sooner because of the requirements of the statute.
No, I don't want to rush it, I'm just trying to understand the ramifications of what that looks like, knowing that what, it will happen.
Ultimately, I don't think we really have a choice, right? I mean, the schools are built, the addition's on its way, so it's just kind of a, this, you're wanting to start the process as soon as possible is the way I'm interpreting this.
We're starting now.
Do we account for any, um, like the new school, some of those even in the discussions and the thoughts as we go through here? One concern I have is they have 400 homes slated in Perrone. 400 homes in Cedar's not a huge deal, 400 homes in Perrone, we, yeah. Uh, yeah, well, and what happens to our school? Cause we have zero classrooms, we have zero space. We have, uh, you know, the, I guess the only thing we can do if we're not going to build another school is a boundary alignment and bus them to Cedar. But, uh, you know, does that become part of those conversations as we work through?
I think, I think, uh, for right now, it hasn't been part of our, our picture of moving everything because our focus is really, how do we fill the new East and take pressure off of like Iron Springs and, and Three Peaks, uh, when they're so far apart? And the answer to that is, well, you have to mess with all of the boundaries. So we'll, we'll share with you our thoughts on that.
Okay.
I'm not as concerned about elementary school, I'm far more concerned about high school because people move to certain places because they want their children to attend a certain school. And if we start messing with high school boundaries because we made some room at a school, but did we?
Yes, absolutely, we've talked about that from the beginning.
Holy shmoes.
I don't think there's any choice but to, it, it, it's not even, in my opinion, none of this is subject to debate really because it, it has to happen. That's the whole purpose of why we built the addition, so.
I agree, the debate is where do you draw that line?
It's where the line goes, is the conversation.
Because ultimately, we are growing, our, uh, Cedar High is getting more full and more full and, and there, we can't just keep going. Although we, no, I, we could, we could just not worry about it. Uh, but we think that we need to at least think about, uh, how we can adjust that boundary. I, I just, I think we're getting to the point where, uh, two high schools are gonna be eventually about the same size.
So are there any concerns from board members? Really what we're doing in our next board meeting is we will be initiating this process.
My, my only concern, and I think we've already spoke to it a little bit, is that high school boundary change, there's going to be some, to your point, there will be some very passionate people and we just need to ensure, and I, I don't sense that we're not going to, that we're going to accommodate to the best of our abilities.
Absolutely, and the, the other thing to understand is with a high school adoption of a boundary change, you typically grandfather in anyone who's currently attending, so if they're a freshman, they get to keep going there for the rest of their time. Uh, so it really doesn't take full effect for four years after you've made the boundary change.
If that happens, does transportation then become the responsibility of the home?
Typically that would be the case, however, uh, it depends on, on our decision, you know, what are, how are we gonna, how are we gonna roll that out?
As that happens, do you think we'll move into a 3A for both schools?
I believe that's where we'll end up.
Where we're going, okay.
Well, one thing to the point you just made about grandfathering people in, um, I think that it's also important to let, if possible, the families continue, cause you really do build a lot of relationships, so like, for example, I don't live in South Boundaries anymore, but my kids attend there because I built relationships, I know the teachers. So I think that if we can, accommodating those families to finish out their tenure, going to the school that they know, just as a suggestion.
Those are, those are, details are all within the purview of the board to decide, where's the line? What kind of permissions are you gonna allow and everything? All of that is really squarely on your shoulders.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to move that we recess for five minutes.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Is everybody okay with that? Okay, we will recess for five minutes. Okay, as long as everybody talks through the next slide as fast.
You don't need to.
Okay, we have all board members back, we'll go ahead and, uh, get started. Item number six, data governance policy. Okay.
Could you just introduce yourself? What were you before that? I, while I was reading it, one question I had as I was going through, cause there, is each one of these different people or can they be the same? There can be an overlap, okay?
Absolutely, am I not very loud? Oh, I'm not using my teacher voice, I apologize.
So, so for instance, like the LEA data manager, I don't know how it works, but could also be this, the, um, student information specialist.
Yes.
Okay, they could be the same roles.
We have a lot that are combined.
Okay, I was just curious about how that worked.
Absolutely.
All right.
I mean, cause if you walk into the tech department, you've got lots of individuals, but you have leads of each of those sections with data, with, um, IT as well as security and then the data manager of Troy Lunt.
Thank you.
Yeah, they, we take on lots of different roles, absolutely. Like I said, I, my job keeps changing, it's one of those things. Um, so like I said, information technology, you can keep going down below. So, like I said, information technology, you can keep going down below. The biggest change to this document, as it has been the last probably three years, it's been pretty much the same, down towards, it's page seven, section eight, is where we had to go specifically into our data breach response policy. We had to align that further to the government, our data governance plan act, or, I, there's so many governance and data, so I apologize. The government data privacy act, we needed to elaborate on that data, that data breach policy to comply with the act. It's a lot of legal fun. I've learned a lot just in the past year and a half.
And this is?
Any questions on this one?
First read, so you'll see this again next month.
This is a lot of how the tech department works.
Any questions from board members?
So, we're gonna draft a policy based off of this information, that's my understanding.
Yeah, we'll take this and number it and put it in the format for policies.
And the format, and then we'll, okay.
But this, this is the policy, we just need some formatting.
Right. And that's okay. But yeah, like I said, it hasn't been a policy before, we have to make it to comply with law. Any questions on that one? Okay, then there's the fun one. Okay. Do you want to move to the next, or do you want me just to?
Yeah, go ahead and move.
Keep going.
Yeah.
Okay. Slow me down if I start talking too fast. The government data privacy agreement, so we have a lot of things in place with our policy to protect the students' data. That's initially what it was all about when we started talking about data and computers and all the different things that we needed to protect for the students. This new act covers not only the students, but it covers the staff. So, all the data that we collect for our employees, faculty and staff. So, within, this one was, it's a lot. They, let's kind of slide down, all of the connections to the law are there. The restrictions and dissemination of personal data, that's how we obtain and process the different data as well as our retention schedule, that includes that as well. Talking about periodically identifying non-compliant processing activity, continually looking at maintaining or the use of undisclosed or covert, oh, sorry, I'm skipping, I'm jumping all over the place, go back to restrictions. The district shall obtain and process the minimal amount of personal data. The next one is identifying non-compliant processes, just auditing ourselves. The next one is we will not establish, maintain, or undisclosed, or convert covert surveillance of individuals unless permitted by law. We do not sell personal data unless expressly required by law, and will not share personal data unless permitted by law, or such as grandma.
One of those, for example, is that military will contact us and we are obligated to cooperate, and so every time I get that request and every time, if, if I can see that it's a legitimate source, then we approve that. So, that's one where we're basically required to turn it over.
Yeah, like I said.
Are we liable for what we share with insurance companies and that type of thing? Because we share that personal data as well?
With insurance companies?
Yeah.
We don't share?
They don't, I mean, they know our personal data, I would assume.
Oh.
Or is this?
Our, our personal data.
Yes. Because this is all staff.
Staff as well.
Oh, this one's just, that's right.
It's staff and faculty.
This is just staff, this policy?
These are for staff, faculty, not for students.
The second one is, the first one was students.
The first one is for everybody controlling it all.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
So, all the data sharing with our, like, health insurance company is, and that is covered through HIPAA, and they have their policies.
And we're not liable for that data once, they have it or we are?
We have to make sure that in our contracts, they are protecting that data.
So, it kind of falls under this umbrella, okay.
Part of that is training, all employees are required to receive data privacy training once a year, and that includes reviewing the data governance plan for monitoring, and we monitor the completion of that training. As for those that we, contractors that we enter into, it is, whose duties are under the contract include processing personal data, shall comply with this policy, and we contract with, shall include, let's see, contract with such a contractor shall include this requirement, so which means they have to follow this information when we make a contract. The personal data request notice is actually a new document that has been created, and what it does is it covers, the bullet points are what has to be within, for the law, have to be in this personal data request notice, and it has to be given to all new staff and to all staff each year. So, this will be a new one that is coming up the line, that everyone has to be aware of, it will cover the reasons we ask for that personal data, what we use it for, the consequences of refusing to provide the personal data, which pretty much means if you're not able to provide this data, this is what we can and cannot do within our district, as well as the record series. So, we have this document, you can click on it, it's there, it actually goes into much more detail on what actual data we do collect, in the different areas that we collected in. I've been working with Monica and Jeanette and asking for lots of different information that way to build that document. And then we also have to create a retention schedule. That means any document, like board meetings as well, how long we keep them, what we do with them, where they go, when we have to destroy them and/or keep them forever. So, that's all in the retention schedule, this is a lot of reading, you guys, it's been a lot of fun building. Any questions so far? We have to make that data, personal data request notice posted, and any new hires have to be aware of it as well. Down for, the, all staff members have the option to request amendments or correction of personal data, and there's a process there that we've set out for those staff members to request that information, and then in addition, the retention and disposition of personal data. And then you go further down, that's where your data governance plan slides in, talking about the breach of data, including your staff members and faculty, and how to report a breach, and this is generally done by our tech department. Like I said, it's a lot of reading. Do you want me to go into more detail? I know it's, I know it's.
I do want to clarify something. I was confusing the two documents. The military never asks for adult information.
Right, only the students.
So, scratch that.
There's a lot there, okay.
I think, I think the only thing, as I was reading through this too, I was thinking that, oh, there's all these, like, okay, it has to be within five days, or if it's, you know, the turnaround time, by January first, we have to have this all, it feels really tight, so I don't know if there's support that we're giving you?
Um, we actually came up, you guys, we brought this a couple months back, because when we heard about the necessary, and then Troy Lent went to a meeting with a bunch of other district leaders, and they were even thinking about it. And so, he said, let's pause on it, let's make sure we're not jumping the gun, so we, that's why we, a few more months to ask around, make sure we were going, and we talked to the state data privacy team, and they were like, you're good, you just keep, keep on keeping on, and we'll probably copy and paste and throw it in ours eventually, but with all the different districts, that's kind of where we are. A lot of those dates and different things come from the law, from the, the act that was passed. Yeah, it's all there. Yes, I need that so that I make sure that I had every piece that was necessary.
Okay, thank you for all of the information, and.
You're welcome. Do you ever want to talk about it? I'm just in the building next door.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, we have policy 102, sexual harassment, and this is complete rewrite of the policy based on legal requirements.
We're gonna start with a quiz, just to make sure you all read all 24 pages. Are you ready?
It's 22 pages.
Oh, 22, I thought it was 24. Well, with the old one, maybe. Recently, we've been working on the 2020 regs for five years now. The original policy was written with the 2020 regs, they, those kind of stopped, or, anyway, there was some, we're not sure if we're doing the new regs or the old regs, but in the middle of all that, we continue to work and deal with situations as they arise, and we've recently partnered with a company that will give us a little bit more legal guidance to help with these different situations, and they suggested rewriting our policy and being more specific in these areas. So, that's what this is, it's a combination of several policies in Utah plus what this company asked us to kind of add and put in there. We've gone through it a couple of times with a fine-tooth comb, the numbering is crazy, I don't know how to do it any different. There's some places where it's 2.27, 2.2.2.2.1, but it's just kind of what it is. I don't know if you want to go through all of it, it really lays out the, a lot more definitions than our old policy did, so that we could be super specific, and then our processes for investigation and appeals, just, it adds more specific guidelines for us than the old policy did.
My only question when I was reading through it was, do you serve as our Title IX person?
Yes.
Okay, that was one of my questions. And then the.
And just to clarify that, I work, I'm, I'm the Title IX coordinator.
Okay.
Tim, Tim Marriott works under me.
Okay.
He does most of our student Title IX issues, I do the employee Title IX issues.
Okay.
But he work, we work together on the legal side of it and investigations.
And then, I think it's titled, the decision make, is it decision maker? Is that how they? Is that?
Decision makers.
Does that change, is that also, you guys, how does that?
It, it does not, well, if I investigate or if I'm part of that, I am not a decision maker.
You're not, okay.
But if Tim does the whole thing, then there's times when I am a decision maker.
Then you can step into that role, so that there's not a conflict.
Yeah, most of the time, the decision makers are the people you see here. The appellate is, that we use above the decision makers is Joby, right, at SCDC, so. It, we just wanted somebody to be outside of the district that could be that appellate that had no connections to the district, and he's been trained, we make sure he receives those trainings, so, and we've used him a couple of times.
So, I was a little confused on 2.2 definitions on actual knowledge. I wasn't, I, I'm just having a hard time understanding what actual knowledge means. So, if somebody is going to report something, what it says, actual knowledge means that an employee, student, or third party has informed the Title IX coordinators or district official who has the authority to institute corrective measures on behalf of the district of the alleged occurrence of harassing discriminatory or retaliatory, retaliatory conduct, actual knowledge compels the district to initiate action. What is actual knowledge?
The second, that they have informed anyone, me or any district official, we have actual knowledge, and that compels us to move forward.
So, we can't be expected to take action if we don't know about it?
Okay, but the second you know, that triggers the process.
Yes.
Okay, that's what actual knowledge.
But if we don't know, yeah.
Can't do anything.
Can't do anything, got it.
Great policy.
Since this is the, like, information items, we could talk it over, you guys tell me if you agree, before the next meeting, I can make those adjustments, and then you can look at it as a first reading?
Absolutely, and please take the time to go through this thoroughly, all board members, and any comments, questions, bring those to Jeanette.
So, yeah, John, let's take a minute and talk when you're not at 1:00 AM.
Well, and I'll just email you some of mine, too.
Okay, perfect.
It's almost 3:00.
Oh, sorry, 3:00.
Okay, that, that sounds good, and I, I think I could show you, like, I put together a document that kind of highlights some of the problems anyway.
Okay.
And we could share that with the rest of the board members within a, an email, so that people aren't duplicating efforts or something like that.
That would be great.
Yeah, maybe if you wanted to share that in an email, then when I call or talk to you, I can have that pulled up and you guys can all see it as well.
Okay, that sounds fantastic. Any other questions or comments, board members? Okay. Policy 335A, stipend for highly needed educators?
This is the poli, this policy that just keeps on coming. John and I worked through this, added the specific titles of the, the science endorsements in section three, and then the other changes really are, I mean, 90% of them are because the endorsement names changed this summer.
Okay.
After we passed the policy. And maybe a li, a few clarifying things, preschool wasn't in there, we added preschool, and then we wanted to make sure it was specific to secondary schools for math and science, and then K-12 for special education.
Any questions, comments on that?
If you do, please let me know before the next meeting, so we can pass this policy through. No, I'm just kidding.
All right. Policy 729, student out-of-state travel policy.
Normally Roy would take this one, but I'm gonna take this. This was a policy that we brought to the board last year, and after meeting with the CTSO advisors and that at the schools, there was one item of clarification that we wanted to make, when in 5.2.6.1, it states that no district supervision will be provided by the district until the number of students attending the event reaches four or more who qualify for the event. In a lot of cases, we get one student from one school, or maybe two students from one school who qualify to go to one of these national competitions, and what we were telling the, the advisors was, if you, if that happens, then if you want to combine schools, or you want to combine with another district that's close and travel together, that's fine, we can do that. Well, us telling them that didn't make it into the policy, and so now we're adding that into the policy. So, 5.2.6.2, if fewer than four students qualify for a national competition, arrangements may be made with another school or school district for students to travel as a group, and the district may provide one chaperone, and the other chaperone will be provided by the other school or, or the other district, so. So, we just add that for some clarification, I believe that's the only change in that one.
And so, as we get into this, moving this forward, if, if the desire of the board's just to move it forward, we don't have, we can move this one.
Forward pretty easily, I think, yeah.
Okay. Number 11, policy 742, attendance policy.
Okay, you've seen this one quite a few times, too, last time we met, you had some, some concerns, some things that you would, you wanted to see addressed, I feel like, based on my notes and re-listening to the conversation, I think we've addressed those. The version that you're seeing here, okay, so if you look at 2.2, you can see that we have crossed out an absence due to reasons such as illness, physical or mental, family death. We got rid of all of those reasons and said, an excused absence is an absence that was excused by the parent or guardian within five school days of the absence, instead of three, which was one of the other concerns. I believe that hits the mark, and then the change had to be made in 4.1 to change that from three to five. If you would like that to look differently, then we can make another adjustment, but I believe that those few changes address the concerns that were expressed.
So, I have a few more concerns.
Okay.
Sorry. The first is a question, an absence is defined basically as failure to attend a class or class period. So, when a student misses an entire school day, you're not gonna give them multiple absences for that day, just one, correct?
So, that's a little bit hard to answer, because if you're a high school student, and the way we look at it is you could miss one class period, but like at Cedar High, that's only one-fourth of a day.
Of a day, correct.
So, so you only get counted as a day when you've missed four class periods.
That's what I was wondering, is administratively, how do you, because, well, for example, my son is at middle school, he has eight periods a day, my daughter's in high school. My daughter's in high school, she has four periods a day. So to me, it's almost like it would be better if it just said fifty percent or more of the day. And then it doesn't, it's not based on a class, it's just based on a percentage of the day, just a suggestion.
Well, the, the one thing that I would say to that though is that it's not always just about the day because sometimes the student is missing the same class.
Right.
And they're only missing that one class over and over.
So you need to be able to hone in on a student sloughing a class. But you also, so I, I, that's just what I'm saying. To me, it's like, almost like that needs to be a second bullet point that like you would have, when a student's sloughing a class, this can be counted as an absence, but you'd have a different.
On the definition of absence.
On the definition of absence. Have it just be fifty percent more of, fifty percent or more of a day. And then have another bullet point that basically says if it's thought that they're slop, you know, you'll, you'll have to come up with better words than I have now, but if they're sloughing the class, you do need to have a, the ability to do to count it as, as an absence. The other thing I was thinking about as far as a parent excusing an absence, if let, let's say for example, example, someone takes their student out of class and they go on a family trip on a Wednesday. Sometimes, you know, parents are extremely busy. They might get a power school notification and just brush, brush it off. And by the time Monday rolls around, they can't even call and excuse their student anymore. So to me, it would be almost better if you just said, you gotta, you, you have to excuse the student within the following week. And that gives people a chance to actually leave, maybe have something chaotic going on, get back and then still have the ability to um, to excuse their student. Do you guys agree with that or is that off?
That's why I was thinking to change it to five because it would cover that week. Days.
Oh, five school days.
Correct. So if you left.
Like business days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just, I think that if a parent's gonna excuse it, they're gonna excuse it. And I'm gonna give an example of this. My daughter, who's at Cedar uh High School, she uh, she loves math a lot. And anyway, we had her tagged in XLT to go study for her math test, right? The, there was a lot of miscommunication, I think, going on between her XLT teacher and the math teacher. And so last year, fourth quarter, the day before the quarter ends, her grade goes to an F. Forty-eight hours of the school year left. And it had nothing to do with her not being in class. It had nothing to do with us not excusing her. It was literally a clerical error by the school. We call and say, hey, I need to excuse her. You can't excuse her. It's been too long. So I'm just saying that I would like to also see something in there that if, if it's found that this, these absences were caused by an error of the school, to give some leeway because in that instance, we were able to work it out. But, you know, if they wanted to really push it according to policy, those absences would have stood. She'd have got an F for the class, in a class that she was in, which was the frustrating part. So I don't know if anyone else has had any experiences like that.
Because cool, because class attendance was tied to grade?
Well, in XLT, it's exclusively tied to grade. And they didn't enter, you know, you have these absences.
I don't know how it works.
Right. And I don't know if that's exclusive. I like the program because it does give, if your student needs to go study for a math test or whatever. I like the program. But the way I understand it is they go to their XLT teacher who tags them in a specific class. But other teachers can tag, so it's kind of a complex system and it's really easy in that system for things to get lost in the shuffle. I understand typically a student is tardy in a class because that's or absent in a class and it's very easy just for the teacher to check it. But at Cedar High.
But when that's found to be
Right.
A clerical error, then it shouldn't.
Right.
It should be eliminated from the.
But shouldn't that be stated in policy just so the parent has something to say, hey, listen, this was a clerical error? I feel that the policy should always stand a hundred percent of, on their own. I don't think that it should require input from anyone. So I'm simply saying that if it is a clerical, clerical error on the side of the school, that there's no, that the absences will be excused or, or whatever, however you want to word it.
Well, it also gives the administration of that school the ability to reverse it and go against policy without having to get an exception. I'm gonna push back a little bit on the absences. Can I clarify with you on that? Because when I read it, um failure of school-aged child assigned to a class or a class period to attend a class or class period, to me, that's pretty clear. If you're missing first period and it's English and you're only missing that one, once you have twenty absences in that class, that to me, that's truant and you have a problem. You could miss first and fourth period every day and still go to second and third because you love them. And that's twenty absences means you've missed a, the whole quarter.
Concern was that, for example, Cedar Middle School, my son, eight, eight periods. If, if you wanted to interpret it, that if you miss a class, it can count it as an absence. That's eight per day. They, that they could push, right? I understand what he's saying. They're, they're trying to, to be able to, if a student is intentionally missing a class, count that as an, and I, I have no problem with that at all.
So it's, you're having a hard, I, I now, so you're having a hard time. If I have eight absences in English and fifteen absences in math, but I've made everything else, how do you determine that it's twenty school days? Is that what you mean?
What I'm saying is, is if the administration wanted to interpret that as every class, I can count each class as an absence because that's what it says, a class, right? Then I can give that student eight absences for missing one day. That means you're truant after you've missed three days of school. I'm just saying, I'm, I don't disagree at all with what they're trying.
Elsewhere in the policy, it does state that we're, what we're looking at is the equivalent of a school day. So it wouldn't count as a day until there were, in that case, eight.
Eight of them.
Eight absences.
Which is fine. I don't, I don't know how we're gonna keep track of that. That's gonna be difficult, but anyway. Yeah, I, I get what you're trying to do anyway.
But we could work on some, yeah, I get what you're saying though. We could work on some clarifying language within that though. I'm trying to find where it says the equivalent of.
I saw that as well when I read it.
In two point four.
Yep.
Two point four.
At least the equivalent of twenty school days during one school year. But even that, I mean, that would be twenty times.
We need to explain that better on two point one. You know, how, how does the secondary class count compared to the elementary, you know, full day or whatever, so? We'll work on that.
Well, and the other one that I was um wondering is, it looks to me, I could have missed it, but that if someone's habitually truant, um we can send warnings, we can give options to the student and the parent. But and it, they, they are referred to uh law enforcement, but nothing really, we don't have any teeth, correct?
Yeah, so habitual truant is a, is, is still in the state law. And it does only take effect if the student is, uh as it says in the definition two point four, if they are in grade seven or above.
Right.
And uh, yeah, ultimately though, the problem with referring to court is any, everything that they do now is an option for the family. So they just say, we have some resources, you can do a mediation, you could do this, you could do that. And then the family just says, well, I don't want to. And that's the end of it. So that's why we're kind of focused in this policy. We're kind of focused down in the, in the number six uh area of what are we gonna do? You know, what, what can we do to make a difference?
That, so I, I know of a family that um the mother was, had a lot of problems. She was separated from her spouse and the children um didn't go to school for about a year. The principal, and it wasn't in our district, this was a different district, the principal would go to the house personally, trying to help get whatever, but they had no recourse, nothing they could do. The children wanted to go to school, but the parent basically had no support and, and really wanted the children to be home with her. Um and I don't know if that's, I have no idea what we can do. I'm sure that's state law, that we can't do anything, but.
Yeah, we used to in, in those, you know, those situations, you would refer to DCFS for educational neglect and we still do that. But again, that's now at the mercy of, of some other entity to decide whether that's worth their time or not. And the answer is typically it's not.
I think that's part of also, when I, I keep referencing, saying this is a lot of work on the account of the school and it is. And if I really felt that there was something to benefit the student there, but I, I kind of don't feel be, because of the reasons you just outlined. Even if we go through all this work, it's gonna kind of fall on deaf ears or fall on law enforcement agencies that are dealing with really severe issues. And so it's sad that that's the world we live in, but I don't know how much of our school resources we want to spend anyway.
I, I, I concur. Well, in fact, here's, here's my question. The only ramification of any of this, and, and I apologize for being obtuse or ignorant, like citizenship grade? I mean, like, what are the ultimate consequences for any of this? I mean, I remember in the day when a single period absence meant a day absence. And if you accumulated a certain amount of those, you were denied credit. And I mean, there were all sorts of real ramifications. And so one of my, I mean, this is what um Tyrell just mentioned. This is an extraordinary outlay of work, extraordinary. And, and here's my sincere question. The only real ramification is a citizenship grade, is that right?
Well, the, if we're talking real ramification, these are the students who are probably not going to graduate. They are struggling in many facets of their lives, but we have seen situations where the school's intervention by holding parent-teacher conferences, by putting these kids in academic support programs, making it an attendance improvement plan or, you know, monitoring the progress of that student and with a caring adult, it makes a major difference. And I, I believe we've seen many students who would not have graduated who did.
So, so those are the ramifications. As we, as we keep a record on all of this, then what ends up happening are all these positive interventions. And so that's why, that's why we track it.
If we can identify what an absence is and we can track that, then this policy will trigger these interventions. And one thing that this policy does that's, that we've never had before is that after all of that's been done and it's not working, we, the schools now have, and this is a big deal. They will have the ability to say, this is not working, you need to choose a different education option. And those are alternative schools, online schools. They could apply to attend another district school, charter schools, homeschools, Utah-Fitzpatrick Scholarship. And we've never had that before in policy. And so this, this really is a, a.
So we give them the latitude.
Policy step, yes.
To, to redirect potentially outside of the program.
And we've never had that before. They've always just had to say, well, what are, let's just keep begging and checking and.
Which puts a ton of weight and pressure on our school administration. But also, if this policy does change the behavior of even a dozen students, it's worth figuring it out.
And, and I would say that all those things that are listed in the bullets on six point three, uh those are happening already right now. So we're just putting in policy with the, the normal practice of educators who care about kids right now in our district.
Yeah.
That's key to hi, to highlight that because I think our district's done a really great job of providing a bunch of different routes to meet the needs of the kids. And that's what we're really trying to do. Our, our job is to educate the kids that are in the district boundaries, however that looks. And we need to be able to support them. And sometimes the support is, what we're offering does not work. You may need to go the homeschool route or, you know, try this online, try this. And now we can help push that, you know, help the families get into the programs they need. So good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um next policy is policy eight oh two, uh compulsory attendance.
So these next two are the same situation. Because of policy seven, four, two, there is no more need for eight oh two or eight oh three. So we would be proposing at the time of the adoption of seven forty-two, that we simultaneously uh retire eight oh two and eight oh three.
Okay, any questions from board members? Okay, um policy eight, six, four, emergency safety intervention, EIS and behavior management.
So I think you've, you've seen this one, uh a, a version of it before, if I'm not mistaken. But this has to do with the safety care, training, the uh restraint and seclusion. Uh Kevin has talked to you about this in the past. And this policy has never existed before. But the state legislature uh passed, uh I can't remember which bill it was. But now it's in code fifty-three G eight, three, oh, one. And there's an administrative rule, a couple of them uh from the USBE. So those require us to have a policy now for these items. And this is the policy that Kevin's been working on for several months now.
Any question from board members? Okay, uh number fifteen, policy nine oh four.
Sorry, I should have spoke up quicker. Um seclusion is used, it is used?
Uh we do have one uh location where, where seclusion uh can be used. And that is in our ABC room at
Okay.
At Iron Springs Elementary. And of course, uh we follow all of the guidelines of it. You can't do it unless the parent signs off on it and all of those uh stipulations are in place. It's a good, it's a good law. It's a good policy because uh we have heard the stories of places that have misused some of these interventions.
Any additional discussion there? Okay, policy nine oh four, advertising, distributing and posting of promotional materials in schools.
Okay, uh we made a change uh back in January that if people, we want to help the community, right? I mean, it's our desire to help. But it sometimes is a pain. We do, we do see. Yeah, that's what I meant. Didn't I say that? No, I, really, because like we have these entities who are like, you could just send this flyer out for us. Yeah. We have an event tomorrow, just in, in our hearts, honestly, we want to help. And, and a lot of these things are good things for the community, good things for kids. Exactly. Let me state that in the microphone. We're not an advertising company. But uh, so we put this in place back in January where we said, okay, if you want to do that and you want to do it just electronically, we can send it to parents' emails. It's gonna cost you fifty dollars. The, the problem is, once we started doing it, it's more complicated than that. Because some people only want it to sent to one school. Or they want it sent to everyone. Or they want it sent to just elementaries or just high schools. So what we would propose is that the board would allow us to just say that all digital flyers are subject to a fee according to district flyer guidelines. And we post the guidelines on the web. I can bring you the guidelines next week. Uh I don't have them today in here. But we've drafted the guidelines and what it does, it just breaks out what it would be for one school, what it would be for all elementaries. You see what I'm saying? So it's a, it's a tiered charge.
Those are all handled through the district offices, I'm assuming. You're not having people, sorry Monica, you're not having people go to the schools and bother them about.
Oh, no, no.
Do the fees still go to the Iron County School Foundation? Can we state that though?
Oh, yeah, I don't.
Because it's kind of gone.
Be still stated.
I think it's cool that they know, like, the district's not taking your money. It, it's going to the foundation. And I, I love that that's where we're taking the funds. Shauna's also likes it.
That is a great point.
And Shauna doesn't work for us, so that's great. Um but if we could just add. Um, but if we could just add that in the verbiage that it still goes, that's where the fees go to, I think that'd be good.
For years and years and years before we changed our policy to not allow any for-profit advertisements to come into our schools, um, our fees were fifty dollars per school and then five hundred dollars district-wide and they had to make their own copies and they had to distribute them to the schools and we kind of stopped that, I can't remember what, what year it was, but anyway.
So, so the guidelines that you'll see next week.
Will be somewhat similar.
Are going to be similar to that structure she just mentioned. But just for digital, yep.
Because we know, we know a lot of shared work opportunities.
Well, and I do kind of even question doing email advertising, um, I, I mean, I, it does say in the event the program is determined by the district to have educational health, whatever the benefits, because in some ways I feel like maybe you just send out an email, hey, by the way, if you ever wanna check this website, this is where we post any events that are happening, so we're not clogging up parents' webs. I mean, uh, my email is just a disaster, but that's Shauna.
So every email contains a opt-out, so.
I know.
Any parent who wants to opt out of receiving them can opt out of receiving them and that's required by federal law.
Yeah, they can unsubscribe to it.
Yep.
Does it unsubscribe them just from this kind of content though? We don't want them to unsubscribe from important school.
Subscribe them from emergency messages.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
That's fair. I would rather get all the things and choose what I choose to open.
Okay, um, do we have a closed session?
No.
Okay. All right, well, thank you everybody, this has been a long night, appreciate everybody's, uh, willingness to serve and, and for what you do for all of our, our kids in our schools. Um, and with that, we are adjourned.